Good evening and calling the meeting to order. Welcome to West Hartford Public Schools Board of Education Meeting. It is Tuesday, September the 2nd, 2025. Amani, may you please call the roll?
Mr. Gagnon.
Present.
Mr. Goldman.
Here.
Dr. Harris.
Here.
Mrs. Nessarella.
Present.
Dr. Thomas Farquharson.
Here.
Mrs. Lakhagolov.
Present.
Ms. Merriman.
Here.
Bridget Feeny.
Here.
Kayla Ja.
Here.
Thank you, and Kayla, may you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now it is time for we have rather have no revision to the agenda order, and now it is public communications. This is an opportunity where we're able to hear from you, your thoughts, your questions, your concerns, and your suggestions. Each individual is allowed three minutes to speak. We ask when you go to the podium to please share your name and your town of residence. Also, please be mindful of Amani, who will hold up a yellow card when you have one minute remaining in your time, and when your time has expired, you will see a red card, and we ask for you please to respectfully take your seat at that time. Before we begin with public comment, I'd like to briefly explain the role of the board and the purpose of this time. Under state law and our town charter, the Board of Education is a policymaking body. We do not oversee individual students, staff members, or classroom matters. Those responsibilities fall to the superintendent and school administration. We welcome and encourage comments on district policies, especially those on tonight's agenda. We also understand that some parents and community members may wish to speak about concerns involving individual students. Please know that when this happens, the board and superintendent cannot respond publicly. This is not out of disregard, but because we are legally bound by the state and federal laws to protect the privacy of all students. We want every child to learn in a safe, supportive environment. While we may not be able to respond here, concerns raised are taken seriously and are directed to the appropriate channels. With that, we'll now begin with public comment. And I will start with those that have signed up on the list, and we're receiving comments on any agenda item, but for the purpose of this meeting, we'll share that tonight's agenda includes revision of authorized signers of the ED-099, revision of policies 5550 and 5560, ratification of the West Hartford Board of Education professional employees, 2025-2026 opening of schools, approval of minutes from the June 3rd, 2025 Board of Education meeting, and approval of minutes from the June 30th, 2025 Special Board of Education meeting. And so, beginning with those that have signed up on the list, we have Tali Kest, and I will say in advance if I mispronounce anyone's name, I do apologize. Tali Kest.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay, great. Hi, my name is Tali Kest, and I live in West Hartford. I'm here today to request that antisemitism education be incorporated in a meaningful way into the curriculum. I'd like to give you an example of the news which I see in my feed daily. On August 19th, 2025, the following occurred. An Uber driver in Vienna kicked out Jewish customers mid-ride, called them "child killers" and struck the father. At Auschwitz-Birkenau in Poland, a woman tried to shame a group of Jewish teens carrying an Israeli flag as they honored the memory of 1 million Jews murdered there. A couple in Atlanta harassed a grieving father who mourned his daughter Rose Lubin, who was killed in a terror attack in Israel, called him a kike and said his daughter deserved to die. Federal and state agents arrested Jeremiah Sawakid of Everett, accusing him of leading a series of anti-Israel vandalism attacks across Massachusetts. Protesters at a Greek port of call lock an Israeli cruise ship from disembarking. All of the above was reported in one day. That is just one example of one day. The FBI reported in 2024 that Jews who constitute only 2% of the population were the target of nearly 70% of all religious hate crimes, and the ADL logged a record 9,354 antisemitic incidents nationwide, many of which actually, in addition to that, go unreported. A recent UC Davis study shows a spike in depression among Jews in the United States since the October 7th, 2023 attacks linked to antisemitism in the aftermath. I took my 14-year-old daughter, Nava, to get her passport photo recently, and she was wearing her Magenwip necklace, which she wears every day. I told her to hide it. Not something I did lightly or would ever ask her to do if I thought she'd be safe, but for a travel document, I couldn't risk it. That movement made me deeply sad. Antisemitism is often a gateway drug to extremist violence. All the way from the Columbine shootings to the shooting in Minneapolis recently, Jew-hating rhetoric was espoused by the shooters. I implore you, please, to incorporate education on modern-day antisemitism in an impactful way into your curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Hillary Fritsch.
Hi, y'all. I am Hillary Fritsch. I'm here to talk about class enrollment specifically at Bugbee Elementary in first grade. You don't know me, but I have lived here for four years. I'm Hillary Fritsch, a mother of three boys, Wesley, Bodie, and Jack, and I'm excited to dedicate my time to this community. I have no family here, no support. My mother-in-law sadly passed away, and my father-in-law has ALS. But I am the youngest of four kids, and everyone lives in Chapel Hill, North Carolina. Go Heels! In spite of that, we moved here, eager to give back to the town we believe would give our three boys a good education. I've served on the PTO the last two years. I volunteered my time with the foundation, reading grants for two years. My husband is a West Hartford Public School teacher. He coaches T-ball, soccer, runs basketball camp. Putting our kids to bed tonight. We believe in this town to be the best community to raise our boys in. In return, we trusted you to educate our kids. We trusted you with my autistic son, Wesley, and this town has shortchanged us. My son is in first grade with 24 kids in his class. Just showing up to school at all. He is climbing a steeper hill than you can even imagine. He struggles every day to make friends and to fit into a world not made for him, and this Board of Education is making it harder for him. Typical kids will struggle with 24 kids in the class, but my son will lose ground, lose opportunity for friendships, lose momentum for learning, and you're robbing him of the opportunity to succeed. The sad thing is, you know it. You guys know that 24 kids in one of the most important years of development is detrimental to their learning. And not just five years ago in this town, the class cap was 22. This year, the class cap not preferred, the limit, was 23. This year, the Board of Education projected Bugbee Elementary to have three sections, but our superintendent decided to combine them, and now there are 24 kids in each class. You're a town that advertises your education, and we live here for the premier school system. However, it's embarrassing. We spend money repaving the curves when my son had trash bags full of leaked water in his hallway all of last year in a 75-year-old school with no airflow, no air conditioning, and the IEP services he gets are always, every day, out of compliance, as reported this summer in a special hearing. We still put up with this, however, because we're supposed to have small class sizes with amazing teachers like my husband. But everyone in this room knows that's not what he's getting right now. On the best day, his teacher can give 15 dedicated minutes of one-on-one instruction to 24 kids. Can't learn to read in 15 minutes a day. Our kids will be behind, and if COVID has taught us anything, it's that you can't get these years back. That is directly because of decisions you have made to put him in this position. And I'm ashamed and sad and lost and disappointed, as are 47 other families. And I'm just begging that you split the grade, reevaluate the numbers, and don't count just adding one aide to float between two classes as a solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jonathan Rayum.
Hello. Good to see you again. Last spring, I was here a couple of times, mainly to express concerns about use of digital technology in the classroom. But before I do that, I do want to say that I've gotten to know this board a little bit better over the last few months and how it operates. And I want to thank everyone who's here on the board for serving. Sometimes when I look through the agenda, HVAC replacements aren't always the top of... That's probably not why people come to these meetings or volunteer, but do a lot of important work, and many of it's unseen and not appreciated. So, I do appreciate it. There are three things that I had highlighted last spring that I like to discuss briefly, and the first is Chromebook use in classrooms. I understand that there's some changes in the junior high schools, and I think that that's fantastic. And the concern there was that Chromebooks were not being used appropriately in the classroom. I understand that this policy may address some of that, so I'm delighted to see that going forward. And maybe in the future, we can decide whether or not software would be needed in order to have control over that. The second thing is student cellphone use. Now, I understand that there's a K through 8 complete ban of cellphones in our school system, whereas it's an off-and-away policy for the high schools. And this seems to be working reasonably well, and it certainly conforms to Connecticut State guidelines, and so that's good. There's always going to be people who bend the rules, though, and I don't have an easy solution for that. However, I do recognize the difficulty that teachers have in policing the classrooms, but I also do recognize that it would be great if students didn't spend their free time in the cafeterias on their cellphones and also in study halls on their cellphones. There's a lot of social development that happens that's not necessarily done during instructional time. So, I'm going to keep pushing for that, but I understand that this body is probably handicapping what you can push for because it would be very controversial to have a complete bell-to-bell, a comprehensive ban in the high school because I think that parents want to have access to their kids, especially in the case of emergency. The third and last thing was that as a generation, we're going through the first experience, the first wave of children having cellphones in schools, and how do we deal with this? And I see students who are in elementary schools with cellphones, and I think that we need to do more to educate parents on the effects of cellphone use. And that's something that I'm going to try to engage through the PTO. I don't know how well I can do that because my son is a Conrad student, and I really think that this has to stop. This has to start... You know, parents need to be informed already in the elementary schools. So, I'm hoping that we could consider that. And I think I'm almost out of time, but I will say one last thing, and that is Evanston Township in Illinois, they had a committee that was convened to work with the Board of Education to look into some of these issues, and they came up with a list of recommendations. And I thought that that was fabulous. And I'd like to see something like that. I'm hoping that through the PTO, I can find a way to work together, work closely with this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Heather Schreiber.
My name is Heather Schreiber. I live in West Hartford. On August 9th, 2024, my 16-year-old son, Lucas, took his life after a month-long battle with depression. Two weeks before his death, Lucas was found guilty of bullying and stripped of his senior year swim team captaincy following a flawed investigation involving incidents that occurred off-campus, most of which were based on hearsay, while verbal and physical attacks against Lucas were never investigated. In July 2024, Lucas and I were summoned to Hall High School by the principal. Lucas had expressed suicidal ideations a few days before, and I couldn't get him out of bed that morning. So, I went alone. In tears, I begged the principal not to take away Lucas's leadership position. I feared it would push him further into despair. The response was cold. Unless new evidence was presented, Lucas would be found guilty. There would be no opportunity to come back when he felt better, even though he had a formal 504 planned for severe depression and the attacks against him would not be investigated. That night, we reached out to you, the Board of Education, for help. We asked for intervention. You did not respond. Two weeks later, my children and I found Lucas's body. After his death, we requested a meeting with the board. We were told that wasn't policy and were instructed to reach out individually to you. Four of you responded. Claire Nessarella refused to meet, offering no explanation. Shannon Merriman and Latoya Lagalov, you never replied at all. How can we, as parents and taxpayers, trust that you prioritize our children's well-being when you won't even respond to a grieving family desperate for answers? You claim that your role is policy, not personnel. So, I ask you. In the year since Lucas, a student with documented severe depression and suicidal ideation, died by suicide, what has been done? I see that tonight you may adopt a policy on restorative practices, but all it does is ask someone else to write the policy. What safeguards have been put in place to prevent students in crisis from being further traumatized? How much funding has been dedicated to training staff on suicide prevention, especially in terms of doling out discipline? What changes have you made to ensure that students' mental health is considered as disciplinary decisions are made? I fear that nothing has changed. A year has passed, and there has been no meaningful protections or real action, just bureaucracy and silence. This is not just a tragedy for my family. It is a tragedy that could happen again. You have the power to change this now. I urge you to take responsibility and act before another child is lost.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Schreiber.
My name is Holger Schreiber. I'm resident of West Hartford. I'm the husband of Heather who just spoke. I wanted to add to what my wife just said. Let's be clear. This is not just about a tragic event of suicide. It is about inappropriate behavior by an administrator that needs to be addressed as it contributed to the suicide. False accusations without clarifying the facts, ridiculing a medically diagnosed depressive disorder as emotional issues, requiring a sick student who is suffering from depression and suicidal ideation to attend a disciplinary meeting in the middle of the summer break, documenting inaccurate or incomplete facts in a student file. None of this should have a place in any public school systems. By not acting and allowing this to happen, you send a message that it's okay to have this happen again, whether in West Hartford or in another school district. Ask yourself, when this happens again and the parents of a child who hurt themselves come to you asking why you didn't act, although you knew about the previous issues and you were provided numerous pages of evidence, how will you answer those questions? Would you let them know that you were just trusting the superintendent, who has shown that he has no interest in resolving the issues? He didn't answer our questions. He delayed access to Lucas's student file because he knows it would bring to light his own failure to act. He had been made aware of the issues by the son's suicide and didn't even bother to reach out despite our desperate pleas. Would you simply refer them to legal counsel, even if they tell you, as we did, that they are not making a legal claim out of it? Or maybe you just follow the most recent strategy of your chairwoman laid out in an email to us last month, which is, "We only make policy." Apparently, it doesn't matter when administrators don't follow that policy. Let me tell you something. When you stand in front of those parents who ask you why you failed to act, none of these strategies will work as you will have to admit that you could have done something to prevent this from happening again, but you failed to address these issues. Think about that when you walk away tonight. We simply ask you to do the right thing, to establish accountability to the individual involved, publicly acknowledging that mistakes were made and making the changes necessary so this never happens again. It's up to you to show the leadership that this town expects and that you promised your voters when you got that letter. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all that we have who have signed up on the list. However, we'll ask if there's anyone here in the room who would like to make a public comment. I'll ask again. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? One last time. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? We shall pause on public communications and now proceed to non-staff communications and reports. And so, before hearing from our student representatives, I want to give a welcome to our new student representatives, Bridget and Kayla. So, good to see you both. We know that you both will share from your respective schools updates not only today but moving forward. Before you do speak, I do just want to formally welcome once again Amani, who is joining us and will be with us as well. So, welcome again, Amani. So, let us please begin with Bridget, who's going to share updates regarding Conrad.
Hello. My name is Bridget Feeny, and I... Sorry. Hello. My name is Bridget Feeny, and I am this year's Board of Education representative from Conrad High School. At Conrad, I am the prom chair slash senior class board vice president as well as president of Model UN and the artistic director of Unified Theater. As these events come along, I'll keep sure to make you updated as well as the other activities we pride ourselves on at Conrad. Conrad's alternate representative, Conrad Colkey, will also be representing our student representatives. Conard's alternate representative, Conrad Colkey, will also be representing our school at some meetings. He is president of the peer mentoring club, a member of the varsity soccer team, and in the select camarada orchestra. I was chosen for this position because of my love for all the opportunities presented to us at Conard. I'm so proud of my fellow club heads, and I am excited to see what we'll be able to achieve this year. On August 26th, Conard welcomed new freshmen back to school with an orientation, introducing them to their classmates and teachers. Freshmen were guided through their daily schedules and shown how to navigate their way through Conard's many hallways. After this, freshmen were given lunch and presented with the club fair, introducing them to all the activities available to them at Conard. We are so excited to see where these new students will end up. One of our exciting upcoming events is the school pep rally. On September 12th, Conard will all come together in the gym and celebrate the new year with some spirit. Good luck to the staff and spirit committee in charge. As the school year has started, our sports teams have had their preseason games going, including our soccer team, which had an undefeated preseason, finishing it off with a 2-1 win in Ellington. They look forward to their opening game in Farmington tomorrow. Our many sports teams are also starting off their seasons this weekend, with boys golf, cross-country, field hockey, and girls soccer having played their first games today. We wish all of them good luck. Select students from the Conard Theater Department performed an original play at the Fringe Festival in Scotland, selling out multiple nights. Students were given the opportunity to tour London and Edinburgh, as well as other student-produced plays from schools across the United States. This was the first time Conard attended, but after so much student support, hopefully it won't be the last. If you want to see the Conard show performed at the Fringe Festival, they will be reperforming Murder at Camp Harmony this upcoming Thursday and Friday at 7:30 PM in Conard's auditorium. I hope to see some of you there. And at Conard, we always love seeing what our theater program is doing, so they recently announced this year's musical will be Anything Goes. We can't wait to see another exciting performance from our talented actors and actresses this school year. And finally, a big thank you to Bob Palmer and the Facilities Department for helping Conard start the school year with fresh floors. This was a huge upgrade from our old carpet flooring, and we are so grateful for the change. Thank you for listening for Conard's updates. I can't wait to keep sharing with all of you throughout the school year. Thank you.
And we can't wait to hear from you. Thank you, Bridgette. Nicely done. Kayla, may you please share what's been going on at Hall?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kayla Ja, and I'm a senior at Hall High School. I'm honored to be the Student Board of Education representative this year. There were many exciting changes at Hall as we start the school year. We welcomed six new staff members to the district, as well as several others who transferred from King Philip and other schools. Over the summer, renovations were completed in the cafeteria and bathrooms, and the updated space has received overwhelmingly positive feedback from both the students and staff. Updates to the courtyard have also been added. Our link crew program successfully welcomed 336 new Titans into the class of 2029. In addition to the academic orientation, transfer students new to the district were also welcomed, where they were provided with an opportunity to walk through their schedules and meet staff before the first day. Parents of incoming students were also invited to attend a panel hosted by staff to learn more about the school community. Last week, class assemblies for all grade levels were held to set the tone for the year. Student leaders also presented alongside administrators about the expectations and policies, including the continued "off-in-a-way" phone policy. To support this initiative, games and activities were added to the courtyard just recently to encourage students to spend time interacting face-to-face and build stronger connections instead of just turning to their phones. Clubs are beginning to hold their first meetings, and today marked the official opening day for fall sports. Girls varsity soccer and field hockey play their first home games tonight, and other teams are preparing for their opening games later this week. On Thursday, all fall team captains will meet to discuss leadership and building a positive team climate. Music groups are also starting evening rehearsals next week. Looking ahead, Picture Day will take place on September 9th. So things are getting busy at Hall with a new school year. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla. Also very nicely done. So welcome again to the both of you. We're so glad to have you here and want to share with you, moving forward, we recognize and respect that you are students first and foremost. So if at any point in time you need to depart early, we certainly respect that, and please feel free to do so. Thank you so much again for joining us. And now we shall proceed to unfinished business, which we do not have any of. So now on to new business, where we have revision of authorized signers of the ED-099 Agreement for Child Nutrition Programs. Seeking a motion that the Board of Education designate Paul Vicinus as authorized to sign the ED-099 Agreement for Child Nutrition Programs and claims for reimbursement, and in his absence, that Barbara Ruah be authorized to sign claims for reimbursement. Is there a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Claire. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jason. Discussion. And I apologize, Barbara, for mispronouncing your last name. Passing it to you, Mr. Vicinus.
Thank you so much. So good evening, everyone, and welcome to the new school year. Obviously, with the retirement of Elizabeth Hewitt and the appointment of Barbara Ruah as our new Director of Finance and Planning, she has responsibilities to include health and nutrition services, adult education, and others. And the 099 agreement is essentially utilized to provide funding for West Hartford through monthly claims that we'll submit to the State Department of Education, primarily for our participation within the Free and Reduced Lunch Program. So this is just the mechanics of adding her name to the signature list.
Thank you. Teammates, any questions? Comments? Seeing none, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, and welcome again, Barbara. Now moving on, where we have a motion by Lorna Thomas-Farkason, Jason Gagnon, and Gail Harris to accept and approve revised and new policies as a first reading. And so good to see Mr. Dorte here in a different role, but good to see you here. Seeking a motion that the Board of Education accept as a first reading the following revised and new policies, which were reviewed by the Board Policy Subcommittee, referring to Student Series 5000, specifically speaking to 5550, revised Connecticut School Climate Policy, and 5560, which is new policy on restorative practices response policy. Is there a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Shannon. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Gail. Discussion. So with our Policy Subcommittee, we are so glad that we have Jason on our team and Gail on our team, and so glad to have you now leading our team. So would you like to share with us, please?
Sure, thank you. I'm not used to sitting up here by myself. It's a little lonely, but I know my friends will join me soon. So good evening and Happy New Year. Before you tonight are two policies for your review and consideration. One is an update, and the other is a new policy. Both are legal requirements and are mandatory for all school districts this school year. The most significant of these is the adoption of the new school climate policy that focuses on strengthening relationships, safety, and well-being in our schools. Some highlights are the adoption of the state-developed school climate policy that every district must implement, which is what you see in policy 5550. There's also clear expectations for responding to challenging behaviors and a tiered response system for addressing incidents. Defined roles such as school climate personnel, including a district coordinator, which is myself, and climate specialists at each school, which are our principals. School climate surveys and school-based climate committees as well, which are comprised of the principal. Parents and caregivers will also look to have students on there. Even at our elementary schools, we do see tremendous value in having our fourth, fifth graders be a part of those committees, as well as, like I said before, parents and caregivers and other folks that are in the schools. Each principal will work with them on that and who gets to be part of those pieces. And then expanding training for our staff. So, you know, one of the things is while these requirements are mandatory, it's important to note that they directly align with our district's values. We believe relationships must be at the center of everything that we do, and although we certainly believe that we do a great job of creating a welcoming and supportive environment for all, we are always looking at ways to improve. We also recognize that students will make mistakes, and although we certainly need to hold students accountable for their actions, we also need to help them repair the harm they may have caused, as well as successfully transition back into the school community. So overall, this policy ensures consistency across our schools, alliance with state requirements, and strengthens the ways we support our students while maintaining a positive school climate in all of our schools.
Thank you. And so with this being a first reading, again, we do not vote on what has been presented today, but does allow opportunity for discussion. So teammates, with what has been shared, Jason?
I'll just add, and it's my understanding that as to 5550 is pretty unique. While the legislature often mandates that we do things, it doesn't always mandate the precise language we're supposed to use. So with respect to 5550, we have no ability to alter that language. Is that accurate?
That is correct. And I know we had some lively conversation at our Policy Subcommittee, and that's, you know, where we've landed. Although I do want to just highlight with 5560, I know that during that Subcommittee meeting, there was a suggestion for a component that I didn't get to get in there on this first reading, but we certainly will have that, and it really has to do with how we'll report out to the board on those particular instances.
Right. So 5560 was a little bit different.
Correct.
So it's helpful to look at these two as kind of companions that make up this climate policy. 5560, we had a little bit more leeway to craft, and as you referenced, we discussed in policy a reporting component of that. So that would be on the restorative justice piece, getting, I think we discussed twice a year, reports to the board about how that's being implemented, the results we're seeing, things like that.
Correct. And, you know, with 5550, again, just to echo that, if you look at all neighboring districts, you'll see the same exact language that's just in there.
And the other thing that would be, so even on these policies, so for instance, on the restorative justice piece, the 5560, that really sets a floor for us, doesn't it? It doesn't say we're not permitted to go above and beyond or to create different things after this.
Correct. And like I said, I just want to really highlight that, you know, as you look through a lot of these pieces, it's the work that we do every day. In fact, you know, I've rolled out two formal trainings for our leaders already, and in that second training, we went through some scenarios, I'll call them real-world scenarios. And we said, hey, how would you handle this before this? And principals went through, and they outlined that, and we were said, perfect, that is exactly how we'd want you to do it, and it just aligns exactly with what they're looking to do. So I think it just formalizes the process that we're currently implementing in our buildings already. Thanks.
Latoya?
Yeah. Thank you for bringing these forward. You know, I love restorative practices, so really excited to see this come fruition. And so my only suggestion is not a policy suggestion, but certainly want to see the district develop some kind of supplemental vision or guide for restorative practices in the district. We have the state definition here in the policy, and I understand that's streamlined, but I'd love to see, like, what is restorative practices for West Hartford? What is the vision for that? If we are saying we're a restorative district, what does that look like? Very similar to like how we did our equity and inclusion policy, like what, you know, how do we take on an identity of our own in the practice? And what does that look like? And so not necessarily a new policy, but maybe a supplemental vision or guide for what that would be like for our district.
Yeah, and...
So I was going to jump in. So I know, and I appreciate the question, very appropriate to this conversation and the policy, but you had asked about that. So in my comments that I emailed out to you all, I put kind of a side-by-side of this new state definition coming directly from the state guidance, as well as an operational definition that we've been working from. But as you may know from our past conversations, a lot of the work that we've been involved been really with restorative practices for, I guess, the last two to three years prior to this legislation even coming up, has been in and around, you know, what we were previously calling like pre-storative work, setting the conditions to the classroom environment, sort of like the conditions that you would want to restore to. Certainly, if conditions are not ideal, if conditions are in any way, shape, or form not welcoming, not a sense of belonging, that's nothing I want to restore into when there's been some disruption to that I want to restore to. And that's been a lot of the professional development that we've been doing. I think you'll catch a glimpse of that in one of the opening of school reports segments in and around our equity work, and we can certainly provide additional updates as to how that's going throughout the year.
Okay, for sure. And then I just wanted to quickly read something real quick, because I just want to like, I want to throw out as many definitions for restorative practices as possible for us to really get in us. And this is from the Little Book of Race and Restorative Justice by Fanya Davis. She's Dr. Angela Davis's sister. And she says, "Causing someone to suffer creates an imbalance in the scales of justice, and the way to rebalance the scales and do justice is to cause the responsible person to suffer. We respond to the original harm with the second harm. Ours is a system that harms people who harm people, presumably to show that harming people is wrong. This sets in emotion endless cycles of harm. Restorative justice seeks to interrupt these cycles by repairing the damage done to relationships in the wake of a crime or other wrongdoing, and do so in a way that is consonant with indigenous wisdom, Africa's, and that of other traditions. Justice is a healing ground, not a battleground." And so I just wanted to share that and ground us in that perspective moving forward with it, because currently, in our country and education systems all across our country, and in really our society, we have a system that harms people for harming people. And I really want us, as a district that has such a high standard for academic achievement, all these wonderful accolades, to disrupt that system by healing people who harm people, helping them take accountability, but not causing them to suffer. And so I just want to reiterate that point and keep that at the forefront of all of our minds. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And just so you know, too, as we've been working, I really have been partnering closely with Teresa and the work that she does, as you've mentioned there. And she's done some really, really great PD already for our leaders and rolling that out through our schools, you know, so I think you'll see a lot of that echo through the work that we're doing.
Gail?
Thank you. So when I was looking further through some of these forms that were attached, like the investigation form, and I can't remember if that was actually in what we got, maybe it was, maybe it wasn't. Some of this, I just was questioning when we talk about these practices. So one of the, couple of the things that are here is, was this investigated as an assault? Was this investigated as an act of physical violence? So I guess I confused a little bit as to where we're going to use this. I mean, if we have an assault in the school, or we have physical violence, I mean, you know, there seems to be, at some point, this would not be an appropriate mode of dealing with these types of issues in the school. So I, and we didn't, you know, I'm just curious if you can elaborate a little bit on where we are going to use this and what types of scenarios, and in what types of scenarios we will not be using it.
Sure. So the forms, again, were things that were rolled out through that policy that ultimately we have to embed in there. You know, one of the things I should have said was that there's various pieces, like you've mentioned, an assault, there may be issues related to other policies we have in place, like Title IX, that that, this doesn't over, doesn't supersede that, so that we would certainly run in those, you know, in that circle and make sure that those other policies are followed closely. But this would be a form that, if filled out, we'd have to go through and complete it as well. And, you know, we talk about some of the different pieces, even with student FERPA and all of that, you know, we have to take a look at, and that's what we've been working with all of our administrators, on how do you fill out some of these forms, you know, related to what the incident is, what's going on in the schools, but always making sure that we still look at, you know, what are the other policies that are implemented? And I think that's the piece why we decided to have our principals sort of be folks at the school that are looking at, but really for them to be consulting with me to make sure we have calibration across the district.
Just to clarify, so this investigation form on any incident in the school, meaning any challenging behavior, even in physical assault, physical violence, this is going to be filled out? Or this is only being filled out where we're going to be using a restorative practice?
So it's, I guess I'll answer that in two ways. One is, you know, you wouldn't necessarily be filling this out just because you're using restorative practices. I think that we would be using restorative practices in many of our situations. It doesn't mean that it result in a form. The form really is required in three instances. One is if a student is removed from class for behavioral issues. One, if there's a suspension, or three, if there's an expulsion. That's when this form would have to be completed.
And if I may pardon, I see your, yes, if I may just, I appreciate the question with that. And to dovetail off of what Julia was sharing, with the form, as it reads on the top, "This form is not required by law or policy, but serves as a model challenging behavior reporting form that local and regional boards of education may adopt." So to your point, in terms of how there is an opportunity, if I'm not mistaken, to add to it or to enhance it to reflect our district, it's more of a template based on what it says upfront. So your points are well-received, if I'm not mistaken, in terms of its interpretation.
Yeah, so when we did consult with Shipman on that, and they really suggested using this template at this point, you know, I think what we're looking at is this year's, you know, I don't know that I'll use the word pilot, because it is something that we need to put into practice, but ultimately, we'll want to look at how things go this year, and then if we want to come back and look at some of the forms, look at different modifications, that's something that we can certainly do. But at this point, that's been the advice that we've received, is to really stick the advice that we've received, is to really stick with these forms, use them for those three incidents that we're talking about, and operate in that direction.
Understood. Thank you. Ethan, and then Claire.
Hi. Couple questions. First is, I don't feel it. My first question is, what I understood from your conversation with Jason is, this is a state-dictated policy? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Is it possible whether it's state for both policies?
Correct.
Okay. It would be helpful if there was like a sort of summary of what the change was, because otherwise, I'm guessing, so, for future, we'd ask that, or ask that for Andy last year, and he was getting that information. So if you could do that, that'd be great.
Ethan, it is. The preceding pages, where you see the red lines, that's the original.
I know, but everything was crossed out.
Right. So that's always the former, and the new is what we see.
I'm just trying to understand the purpose of the change, that's all. So was it, the change just grammatical, or was it, there was a policy change or a difference? Because I wasn't able to figure it out.
So I think if you look at, essentially, all of the red was the old policy. So you can, I think, just even visually get a sense that pretty much the old policy is completely gone, and we're moving towards all of the blue now, which is the new policy.
Yeah, I might be able to add, help, just the, I know what you're asking, it's kind of like, what's, what's the Reader's Digest version and the intent with the state? And I think it was a wholesale change to the state's bullying policy, which previously indicated that incidents needed to be pervasive and repeated to a larger collection of catch-all challenging behavior, for which bullying is now a subset. So it is a wholesale revision, based on that intent from the State Department of Education, to essentially redefine what they're calling challenging behavior in schools.
Okay. No, I just...
No, I understand, it's a good question.
All right, thank you. How do we define success?
On this particular policy, I...
Or both?
I mean, I think our success would be looking at, when we look at our school climate survey data, you know, I think that would be one measure of that success. So you'll see that there are surveys, which we do already now, and I think that's the data I know that we spend a lot of time on. I know Paul spent a significant amount of time meeting with principals and looking at their own individual schools, and to try to look at, you know, those pieces, I think that would be one measure of success.
Okay. No, I just think when we put in policies, we should know what success is, or...
Yeah, I'll add one layer to that success. You know, I don't know that I can qualify the metrics for it, but I think it speaks to what Latoya shared. Our historical discipline policies have always been, for lack of a better word, transactional. You do A, and then you receive B as a consequence. But what's missing from that often is, how do I, how do I repair whatever harm was done, and how do I reintegrate you into that learning community in a way that acknowledges that, you know, something was disrupted based on what happened? And so, so the successful reintegration of students following some of these challenging behaviors would be, would be a measure of success. Now, how, what the metrics on that are, I don't know that we, you know, we're trying to attack that, and the, you know, the state was charged with coming up with a model. And so we have some model surveys and some model plans that we're going to be implementing this year. But understood, like, if we're going to do something, how do we know it's working? How do we measure its impact?
Well, I was also thinking in terms of like an after-action report or review, is this happened, did it have this, you know, an incident? Did we do it right? Did we do it wrong? Or how can we improve it in the future? And I assume since the positions labeled were principals and yourself, it didn't really impact the budget?
Uh...
The policy change?
Nope, just time.
Okay. No, because when I originally read it, I thought we're adding. Then my final question, and there was a mention that SROs should not be involved in, on page 23, is how I read it. Is that the state dictated, or is that...
Yes. That, again, everything you see in here was taken directly from the state language.
So is that going to be a much different procedure than in the past, or will there be differentiation? It just makes me nervous when you have different policy, or you're following different procedures, as different outcomes.
Again, I think, you know, the best way to answer this really aligns with what Gail's question was. There's going to be certain instances where there's other policies in place that have other things that need to occur as well.
Okay. I'm good, thank you.
Latoya.
Yeah. I apologize, pardon me, Claire. Oh, I'm sorry. I was like looking this way, I didn't even see you. Just to, a couple of quick things, because I know our district did SBDI, that I know CHDI is going to be sending some forms out to all the schools that are part of SBDI to help with some of the tracking with schools, to get some of the quantitative and qualitative data. So I know that'll be helpful for our district, as will a lot of other districts. So I wanted to throw that out there, because I found that out. And then also wanted to just kind of help build on, like, it can be hard sometimes to get some of that data, because it's qualitative. So like, for example, I think I talked about this last year, like, I've done a restorative justice conference where, like, the accountability piece was like, it was a student who said a racial slur. The accountability piece was, the student signed up to take African-American history studies this semester. The student's class got moved from the other student who didn't feel safe from. The student started a social media campaign to teach about racism and oppression. And so it can be hard to measure some of those things. And so I think one of the great things about this, the practice, is that it allows for creativity. And I think to build on what Paul is saying, is like, a slap on the wrist kind of takes away the creativity. You still get the consequence, but sometimes the accountability piece can't be measured in a transactional survey. But I think, you know, at some point, when we get those report outs, we'll probably get some of those, those stories.
I don't know if I'm supposed to respond, but I just want to make sure that there's an, yeah, there is a response, however it's done.
Apologies, Claire. Oh, did you have, Claire, and then Latoya, Shannon, and then Jason.
So I just wanted to say hats off to the state of Connecticut for making this across the state. And I know that the people working on this policy don't come from other fields. They have educational background, they have counseling background, and this is some good, good steps to try to heal some of the harm and the dysregulation and the challenges that kids face in school. It's hard to get along with everybody. And when you come to school, having social-emotional learning and a way to bring the whole class together, and the teacher, and everybody building trust, I think it's great. And I assume that a lot of these things, I've heard of you presenting in West Hartford. So are there any surprises or big lifts that you see out of these bullets that we've not touched on already, or is there something really new?
No, I think it aligns, like I said, with what we've always done. I think the piece, you know, to sort of echo, I think what everyone's kind of saying is that we recognize that when things occur, you know, and it's something I always talked about, there's a story behind the actions. And so I think when you just go to this, you know, I think Paul referred to it as like transactional, like, hey, you did this, you get this, you're missing a whole story behind the why. And so, you know, one of the things we've echoed, I mean, I remember as an assistant principal, like, years ago, doing that kind of like, hey, just really think about like what happened. And even I share it, and I used to share it at all the new teacher orientations, if you take an opportunity to hear the story, oftentimes your anger will turn into sadness when you start to hear those pieces. And so, you know, what I think this is going to do, and we've been harping on that, is really just slow everybody down, like, let's really hear what's going on, let's figure out what we need to do to, you know, if there needs to be some type of consequence. Like, again, that's something we need to look at. But more than that, is also looking at, how do we repair the harm that occurred? And that goes all the way from, you know, in kindergarten, first grade, when something happens, like, you still need to get those kids together and repair it, and talk about, and have learning come from that. And that goes all the way to 12th grade, right, when things occur. And how do you sit children down? How do you sit classrooms down? Sometimes I remember as a principal, needing to get the entire class in the auditorium and talk about harm that occurred, and really look at, hey, how do we restore this as a community? And so I think there's a lot of good modeling, right? It's the modeling I think we'd want people to go back and to have good discourse and figure those pieces out. And that's why I think we're primed for that, because we have the environment, we've talked a lot about building relationships, because I don't think you can get to any of this if you don't have that relationship piece. And, you know, we know that kids, kids know right away, whether you care or not. And if you're going to try to do this, and they feel like you really don't care, it's going to be hard to make any headways. And so, you know, I guess it's a long way to answer your question. I don't see anything significantly different. I think it just really aligns, and hopefully actually creates a consistency for us to do some of this work.
And I'm assuming there are some districts that have a little more work ahead of them, because they haven't been delving as deeply into all these aspects. So this is a big lift for, for some towns. I really like that you're having school climate committees include students, and especially that fifth graders or fourth graders. Elementary students know a lot about the school climate. They have insight that teachers don't have. And so I think it's really important to hear from the kids in every school. And then, as far as reporting, the biggest change I see is the definition of bullying. And for years, you could not use that label unless you could prove that it was repeated behavior over a period of time. And now bullying can be seen as an isolated incident. And, and that changes a lot. That term was restricted from being used because you couldn't, you couldn't always find the repeated. So that, I think that's going to change, be an adjustment for people who follow the old definition.
Yeah, and I think I would just echo is that, even though, we'll call it in the previous, as like, the old way, I'll say, is when something may have occurred that now would be considered or would meet the definition of bullying, like, we were still addressing it, and we still knew, like, hey, it's really important to address this issue. We didn't just say, wow, that was the first time, we'll wait. Right? So we would actually start, and that's where we go back to those restorative circles, those practices, right on that first piece. So for us, I think what changes perhaps is now that it does get that term with it, but ultimately, our actions and what we're hoping to get there isn't, there really is no change for us.
So similar to Claire, I'm really excited to see that it's getting some more definition, but it still feels a little squishy to me, in terms of it being in compliance with the state law and the shell that then enables the actual on-the-ground implementation. And I wonder if there could be something that strengthens around, on page 24, that the board directs the administration of the district to develop a continuum of strategies, dot, 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 that shall be provided to the public through publication, not limited to publication in the relevant student handbook. I'm, I guess I'm looking for a date certain by when that would happen, so that we have something a little more concrete to wrap our arms around, because I think when you speak to consistency, I think that's what we want to see, so that we don't have any incident or person fall through the cracks because their situation was handled differently. But to have a protocol that everyone can kind of be on the same page with. So I'm wondering if there could be something to strengthen the date by which that would be in place. And then the second paragraph around the reporting out, more specificity about the frequency, like, how often would we hear reports about how it's going, if it's a pilot year, how, what did we learn from that? Can it be, you know, once or twice a year to the board? Just some more specificity in those two paragraphs, I think gives more, kind of, it feels like it's headed in the direction where we can codify what this looks like for West Hartford Public Schools. So it's not, it's not a guessing game to anyone, everybody's on, on that same page.
Jump in quickly, and you can add and correct anything I say, Giulio. So I am aware that, that the State Department of Education has provided guidelines for school districts by which they'll have their school committees formed, trained, have first meetings, things of that. That, that's not necessarily a statement that lives within the policy, that's, that's kind of like an implementation step. And I'm sure Giulio has those specifics and can share them. But then relative to, you know, the report outs and all the rest, especially as we modify this, I mean, I would simply suggest the difference between what you'll pass as policy and then what you'll ask for as agenda, because you always have the ability as a board to say, hey, we'd like an update on X, Y, or Z, as opposed to creating a mandate for all future boards to have, you know, programmed pieces. So I think especially, you know, I don't think that there's a dramatic difference in terms of how we will operate. There are some fine tuning in terms of, we're looking at, for instance, the surveys. We, we've always given surveys and included questions that relate to the environment and, and school environment and places, you know, interactions and satisfaction ratings with, and the question is, well, the degree to which we will modify that to ensure that it's covering the bases that we need. Likewise, the, the development of a, of a district-wide school climate, or a school-wide climate plan. School-wide climate has always been a component of our school development plans that are, you know, and we spend a significant amount of time talking with, you know, our principal team in terms of where they are, what metrics they have to show for that. So just how do we adjust for that, so that we don't have to create a 10-page report that's an addendum to the 15-page report, kind of a thing. So I, I think we can, we can provide you as a board some additional information around that, that's more procedure-based, regulations-based versus policy-based, in my opinion, but for your thought and consideration.
And if I may say, in our policy subcommittee, to your point, and also, Ethan, to what you were referencing in terms of data collection, the suggestion was made in terms of how it can be reported back to the board. And so there was a recommendation for it to be twice a year, and that language will be added to what is written before us. Jason, and then Latoya.
So one thing I brought up in the, in the policy committee discussion of this was, you know, obviously, we didn't have this, on 5550, we had no control over the, the language that was being used. And I had mentioned that I'm troubled, and I don't think it's necessarily the definition we would have come up with for bullying. And, and I think it's problematic. And I was wondering, kind of, you know, if you could speak more to the implementation and to when that term would be used, because, as I remind my kids often, the term bullying can do a significant amount of harm. I mean, to be labeled a bully, you know, that's harm in and of itself. And so I don't think that should be thrown out so lightly. This is a big change in the definition. And I was wondering if you can speak to how that gets implemented? How, you know, do people get training on that? If there's a new expectation for how, you know, students are to behave? So for instance, this references power dynamics, is that I'm the captain of a team, and, you know, am I in a power imbalance with someone who's, you know, underneath me, you know, those types of things. Because I think if there's going to be this new standard there, I'd like to know how that gets implemented. And then again, what we do with, with that definition, because that has such power.
Yeah, I mean, to be honest with you, I think I had the same, when I first saw that, that was something that did stand out to me. I've actually met with Jason Siegel, our athletic director, and talked to him a little bit about, like, hey, when you're meeting with your captains, like, good opportunity to start to roll some of this type of language out, to let them just understand that piece. But it is a, it is a significant change to that definition. Like I said before, I think how we would handle those things, I don't know that that necessarily changes, but I do think as far as looking at it falling under that umbrella of challenging behavior, you know, it does make that shift. And so we have, as I mentioned, have had two trainings already with our principals. In both of those trainings, we had multiple scenarios. And I will say that I think there was at least probably three scenarios, if not more, that would now meet the definition of bullying, and sort of put that up there, went through them, and then sort of said, hey, what do you think? How would you handle this? To make sure that they understand that piece. But I think there is a component that we want to, and as soon as, you know, the board makes that approval, let's start to think about, hey, how do we message this out to not only our students, but to families as well.
And I, and I'll piggyback one thought. I think this goes to the inclusion and sort of the marriage of this policy with the restorative practices policy, because we've seen this in our work with, with parents, when, you know, children, adults, you know, at all times make bad decisions in a moment, and might exhibit something which could be considered either challenging behavior, or even by definition, that's bullying behavior. But that's different when I personalize it to you and say, okay, that makes you a bully, Giulio. That carries a whole different weight and connotation. That means that you're, you know, you're predisposed, or you have a propensity for engaging in bullying behavior versus something that you did wrong that, that can be viewed as bullying behavior, and now I need to talk to you about that. And let's, let's, let's implement the restorative work so that we can, you know, we can repair that harm, and so that you don't become a bully. So, but I know that that's a trigger word for many of our families. Our families very much are keyed in and don't want to see incidents of challenging behavior, but they certainly, they recognize that your children may exhibit challenging behavior at times, but as soon as that word bully comes in, and people will personalize that, are you saying my child's a bully? Saying, well, I'm saying this, your child engaged in what might have been bullying behavior, and we'd like to work with them to kind of nip this in the bud and get past it and repair the harm. And so I think that's the importance behind the marriage of the two policies.
Yeah, and I appreciate Paul highlighting that, because that's actually some of the time we spent with our administrators, is talking about the... time we spent with our administrators, is talking about the language and the words you're using. Because the truth is, I think if a parent, once you say that word, like, it's hard sometimes, I think, to get past that and to then really start to process and work together. And so as Paul said, it's, it's bullying behaviors, you know, and really getting to those pieces to then start to work on the repair component.
So what I'm hearing a lot of, and what I'm thankful to be hearing a lot of, is this kind of holistic approach of taking the individuals involved, the situation involved, and really looking at that. That gets hard to implement, right? Because it is such a one-off. It's, it's, it's this very specific fact-intensive kind of, kind of situation. How does this get rolled down from here? It's one thing for us to have this policy, but because of the nature of what the policy is, who gets training on this? How do we make sure this is being implemented? Do we have situations where people are going to learn from, you know, a situation that happened in one school is, is a model for, for something else? Is, you know, we handled this really well, or here's where restorative justice really could have come in and we didn't use it as well as we could have?
Yeah, I, you know, I think we're very fortunate here in West Hartford. We have phenomenal leaders, right? Our principals are phenomenal, and they believe in this work. This is the work they do. And at all of our principal meetings, Paul always has time designated. And we even talked as a, as a cabinet this year to say, like, hey, let's really make sure we carve out time to have these conversations and to really say, hey, who's got an example we want to go through? Let's talk about best practices. Let's talk about maybe when we misstepped. Hey, could we have done that differently? How would you have handled that? And start to work those pieces? I think that's why it's critical that, and they know that, and I've said, just call me. Call me. And, you know, they have my numbers that I can get and work those things through, and we can start the processes. Because, you know, I think the piece that can sometimes be challenging, even when we're looking at providing data to the board, which again, I'm happy to do, is that there, you know, is, it may not always be A equals B. And in fact, it rarely is, right? Because that path to get there may be a little bit different, or what caused it. So trying to figure out all of those various pieces, and that is, it's, it does take time. And so I think Ethan was the one that asked, like, what's the financial piece behind? It's, it's not necessarily money, it's the time. Because to do it right, I do think you've got to slow down and really listen and, you know, and it's one of the things we've always talked about and that I believe in, is that, you know, we're in the business of working with people, and when you do that, things can't be looked at as tasks. Because it's very easy when you get an incident that occurs, or we'll call it a challenging behavior, and you're like, okay, boom, I'll do that, to get it off my desk and move on to the next thing that I need to get done. But that's not how we do good work. And really saying that you need to slow down, listen, talk to the kids, talk to the stakeholders, and let's figure out what, what happened, what really we need to do now to get to a place where, you know, we can ultimately welcome them back to the community and figure out what needs to occur. And that is going to require training at all of our leadership meetings, which again, we've carved out and started to look at those pieces.
And, and I just want to credit Giulio, and maybe this will answer your, your next question. I want to credit Giulio and Teresa. They've already begun this work with our leadership team in our back-to-school meetings. They did a number of scenario-based examples. Giulio's kind of referenced them a little bit in his presentation tonight, but not to the depth that I can picture as I was sitting through it, where they're describing things, talking about how, how they did or didn't meet a specific new definition, but then really carved into, but, but what are the steps that you take? Had, had the administrators from across the different buildings talking them through. And we've done that, and we do case studies on different things. You know, we've, we've, we've done it not only for our work with restorative practices, we've done it for our work with security protocols. So we, we do it in a number of ways within our leadership meetings to try to cross-pollinate the learning, as you were asking.
And, and from the leadership, does it go down into the classroom? It's red. So again, great that the, the leadership's being trained, but, you know, this frontline is in the classroom, right? So how does this trickle down? What kind of training is available for teachers?
So it will, there is some turnkey, but I'll, I'll piggyback. This is, this is relatively new, so I'll kind of just share how we've done it with the SBDI. That was brought up a couple of times. And I know that was a question, I didn't have available numbers, but I put it in the most recent thing, most recent superintendent's update to you that I just sent out tonight. So when our schools were going through their two, their secondary schools were going through their two-year SBI training, we had a core of between and based on the building size, six to 12 teacher leaders that underwent a train-the-trainer model. And then within those, they, they had access to four or five different professional learning models under SBDI. They then turnkeyed that to the entirety of the staff. But it, but it's not always the entire staff that's necessarily going to, at least in these first couple of years, lead the restorative kind of a conference or something to that nature. Some of that work will be done initially at least, especially as we consider how, how this is working through some of our assistant principals, and certainly our building administrators, who will receive specific and ongoing training through structures that we have throughout this year. But similar model, we are able to turnkey some of, turnkey it. We do have, you know, that, that was one of Teresa's vision for the Equity and Diversity Council, was to change that model from more of an after-school setting to an in-depth, in-school setting with folks that could be a dedicated arm to do some of this work and partners to the leadership. And so I think she's reported last year to you how, within that, she has four full-day workshops with the EDC members where they're delving into some of the restorative work, and the building administrator joins for a period of several hours so that they can kind of crosstalk strategy. So we do have structures and ideas in place how to turnkey it. But it's not an overnight, because we don't think this work is easy. In fact, we think it's very complex. There's got to be readiness, there's got to be subtlety, there's got to be sensitivity. So we're not looking to turn it over to the masses, you know, in one month's time. We really want to marinate a core group of people in it at first.
Latoya? And then Ethan.
Yeah, thank you for all that context. So I just got two little points I want to hit on this, and one is, teachers and school staff are going to have to do this too. And I just want to throw it out there that this means that when a teacher or a school staff member causes harm, like the expect, at least, the expectation for me is that they are willing to sit in a circle with a student, they're willing to have those conversations. I've had to sit in a lot of uncomfortable circles with my students and say, listen, I'm sorry, this is what I was thinking, what can I do to make it right? And I think that's going to be one of the big drivers for consistency with the district, is if adults are also modeling this, adults are also apologizing, taking accountability, and doing what has to be done to make things right. And my second point, which is still on adults, is families. And so families out there, like, you have to be, you know, you have to rethink some of the things that are happening at home. How can you create household agreements with your students about, you know, accountability in the household? How can you, you know, when, when they're doing things at school, maybe they're causing harm at school, how can you have these conversations at home around how to take accountability and like thinking about the impact of their words and their actions? So I think, you know, the whole community is going to have to really start kind of speaking this language and taking on these practices, because it's also not just on the district, like on, you know, to, to do the work. And so I also, you know, I'm hoping there will be opportunities for, for families to get trained, but I think that's going to be, you know, a big thing too. We need the parents involved, we need them, you know, using the practices, and then we need the adults in the buildings to use the practice. Just because we're adults doesn't mean that we're always right. And when we do cause harm, we need to take accountability in a real and authentic way with students.
Ethan, and then Gail.
So I'm just looking for some clarification. At a while, I don't know how many more minutes ago it was, about 10, 15 minutes ago, we were talking about identifying individuals as bullying or describing bullying behavior. My assumption is, because you have a committee, that before anybody gets labeled as such, they would go before the committee, nobody would be labeled by an individual? At least from the school perspective?
So the committee is reviewing, they're, they're helping create the school improvement plans, and then they'll be looking at data as well, and what they think are things that we can do to improve, but they wouldn't be looking at a specific incident like that. That's really where the administrator, myself, would really be talking that through. And, you know, for something, again, like the bullying, we would need to look at the specific definition that's now been outlined by the state, and looking at, does it fit or not?
But it'll go before multiple people as opposed to just one individual?
Well, it would never go before one individual. Again, you've got the assistant principal, you've got the principal, you've got myself, looking at those, you know, looking at it all.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Yes.
Thank you.
Gail.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One thing that, you know, I, I find questioning, and maybe somebody else was questioning this as well, but there seems, I, I do worry a little bit that there could be a lot of subjectivity here. And what, if there's subjectivity, meaning, you know, I'm a principal who is going to implement this, this way in my school, but another principal will implement it that way in, in a different school, would that sort of open the district up to many problems when parents say, well, you know, my kid was treated this way here, but, you know, this kid was treated this way there? So when I think about policy now for challenging behaviors, you know, I, I feel like we more or less have a policy across the district that, you know, is more or less consistent. And there's something about this that, to me, sounds very subjective, and maybe I'm mistaken. Maybe you can comment on that. The other thing I wanted to ask you about is, which I kind of alluded to at the beginning, I mean, there are certain events that I would assume that, you know, you had said that other policies would come, would sort of supersede this policy. So I'm assuming that if there is violence, assault, that we would be handling that in, not necessarily in a restorative way, because that would mandate a different response. And I'm just, would like to, I mean, it's not that we couldn't handle it maybe with restorative as well, but I mean, I would assume that in a situation of violence or assault, or, you know, some of the other more serious offenses, that we would be handling that in a different way. And I just want to make sure, I know you said, you know, different policies would, would sort of supersede, but I, I think there's a place for this, but I don't think that there's a place for this across every type of incident in school. That's my second, and then I have one other thing, but you can go ahead.
So I'll just comment on the, you know, I'll start with the first one as far as subjectivity is concerned. You know, I, I think when you look at all discipline, I think when you look at teaching in general, right? Like, teachers get their curriculum, and how you're going to get there, you're going to take sort of your approach and how you want to get to that end result. I think when you look at the discipline piece, at the end of the day, you're looking at the story, everything that went into it, what the impact is, what the situation is. And so, although it may oftentimes, from, you know, the top deck, looking down, right? It may look the same, but there was so much that went into it that made it, you know, a little bit different. And I think that's where our administrators do a really nice job of doing that. And although at the end of the day, you know, a student may receive the same consequence, but it's how they got there and what then comes from that piece. Like, are they in a place to do those restorative circles? Are they not there yet? Do we need to give some more time? And I think that's sort of the answer to that piece. I think as far as looking at, you know, the different policies that may supersede things, or, or, you know, I, I think that we're looking at them together. And so at the end of the day, if there's a serious, you know, I'll, I'll use a, a serious offense where you have a student gets expelled, right? So there, there may be an expulsion, but at the end of the day, we've gone through that process, whatever those results were, and then at some point, that student's going to come back to school. Let's say it's a year from now, like, when they come back to school, we still want to make sure that they're, that whatever harm they caused was repaired. And so we went through all the, and I'm using the most severe one, right? But I think that that hopefully can highlight what I'm talking about. Like, we had to do those pieces, they went through all that process, but now we want them back in our community. We want them back, and, and not only do they need to feel welcomed back, but we need to make sure that whoever that harm was caused, that they're in a place where they can, you know, feel comfortable with that student back now. And, and sometimes that doesn't mean it's going to happen tomorrow, right? I think we've all had harm happen to us, and, you know, truthfully, like, I may not be ready to have that conversation in two minutes. But at some point, like, if we're going to have to work together again, like, I, I have to try to get to a place where I can, you know, do some of those pieces. And ultimately, if, if that's not going to happen, right? Like, I'm, I'm not going to be able to do it, then we look at, how do you make sure that those interactions are, you know, that that person feels safe too? And so maybe they're not in the same classroom, maybe they're not in the same lunch, whatever that would be, so that we can do those. But at the end of the day, I don't know that we would ever do one and not the other. Oftentimes, I think we're going to be doing them both at the same time.
Okay, that was actually helpful. Appreciate that. My last just comment is, there is something in here, and I don't remember on what page, that, you know, you had to say if the event happened in school, at school grounds, and off-premises. So is this policy going to extend to something happening in someone's basement?
So currently, our policies and our practices do involve that, depending on what the, what happens at school, right? There's a significant disruption to the educational setting, and now it's, it's having an impact at schools, and that could be something that we would look at.
Other comments or questions? If someone already raised their hand to do so, pardon. All right. Well, again, this was a first reading, and thank you for the robust discussion. This will come before us again for a second reading, at which time we will vote on these two policies. I'll ask once again, is there any other, any other questions or comments regarding policy 5550 or 5560? All right, well, thank you very much, Giulio. Thank you. Now moving on to ratification of the West Hartford Board of Education Professional Employees, seeking a motion that the Board of Education ratify the negotiated agreement between West Hartford Board of Education Professional Employees and the Board of Education for the period of July 1st, 2025, retroactive, through June 30th, 2029. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Jason. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Shannon. Discussion, well, welcome. Pass the mic to our superintendent, who will pass the mic over.
Thank you. I'll, I'll turn this over quickly to our new negotiating team, Mr. Duarte, Ms. Majinsky, and Ms. Ruah, and thank them for the work that they've done, and thank the work of our professional and technical staff as well.
So before you for approval is the ratified agreement between the Board of Education and the Professional Employees. This is a group of about 30 individuals, and they work in a variety of roles. That includes human resources, IT, transportation, residency, the benefits office. Although they often work behind the scenes, their roles are extremely important to the management and operations of our district, so I want to start by thanking them for all that they do. So the Professional Employees ratified this agreement a few weeks ago. The contract that you're voting on is a four-year contract. As you can see, if we just kind of go through, there's a general wage increase each year of 3% and step movement. The reason you'll see that there's retroactive pay, it's because the previous contract ended on June 30th, and since the negotiations took place over the summer, this was the first board meeting since the contract was ratified. Based on years of continuous service, there's also a lump sum longevity payment that is given each year on the anniversary date of employment at the following amounts. So for six to nine years of service, it's $600. For 10 to 14 years of service, it's $1,000. 15 to 19 years, $1,250. And 20 or more years of service, $1,500. The premium cost share for employees will be 20.5% for the next two years, and then in 2027 and 2028, that increases to 21.5%. And in 2028 to 2029, that employee's share is 21.75%. As far as retirement, the employee pension contribution will be at 6.25% for this year, and then in 2025, or in, I should say, the next three years, starting in 2026, it remains at 6.5%. This was the first contract negotiations that I was part of in this role. It was a very positive process. It was very collaborative, and again, we're thankful for all the ways that they contribute to our district. And if you have any questions, either I can answer them, or Giulio, or Barb.
Thank you very much for the summary, and welcome once again. You've been here before, but your new role, welcome once again.
Thank you, it's a pleasure.
Thank you, a pleasure to have you. Quite, yes, Latoya?
I don't have a question, but I just want to say, like, I just appreciate the work that y'all do, and I wish, like, I just, I'm seeing what people, I am seeing what people in this country are being offered to do inhumane, vile- in this country are being offered to do inhumane, vile, horrible things. And it just makes me think about what teachers and folks that are working in schools should be getting paid. And so it lets me know that we do have the money in this country to do it, and we're going to keep trying to fight the good fight to, to make sure y'all get at least close to what you deserve. But I just, I want to just say, I recognize the moment that we're in, I recognize the charge that you all have, and it's no small feat. And so I wish we had an endless well of money to literally pay every person who works inside of our schools what they deserve. And so I just, I just want to say that. I recognize the work y'all do, and I salute y'all. So thank you so much.
Other questions or comments? And student reps, want to say as well, you also are able to participate in any conversation we have as well. Any other questions or comments? Ethan?
I just have a procedural question. I assume this fits within this budget for this fiscal year?
Yes. When we're preparing our budget, knowing that our contract is going into negotiation, we make assumptions, looking at other contracts so that it's in the budget.
So the assumptions were basically relatively there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, with the motion on the floor, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? The ayes have it. Thank you so very much. Thank you. And now moving, oh, you all might have said, yes, we're going to move right on to staff communications and reports, and we're going to have a table full of folks here, where we're now going to first begin by hearing our superintendent's report, and then hearing from several others. So passing it to our superintendent.
Thank you very much. So before I get too far, and I'll give, I'll filibuster a little, let the team get settled, I do want to, again, welcome Bridget and Kayla. It's a pleasure to have you both here, and I'm looking forward to the year. I want to share a couple of things, couple of announcements that came in over the summer. So this summer, 3M, you're familiar with 3M? They make post, I think they're the Post-it note people, right?
Competition.
Yeah, and Discovery Education recognized Aaron Chamstein, a current Hall freshman, a former KP Mustang, as Connecticut's state merit winner in the 2025 3M Young Scientist Challenge. The Young Scientist Challenge is a national-level competition that features outstanding innovations of our youth, that demonstrates the power of science to improve the world. So Aaron was one of only 32 recipients of this honor from across the United States. We're very proud of him. He did so as a King Philip eighth grader. I know King Philip is very proud. Also, in late June, four students from Sedgwick and Conard represented Connecticut through their participation in National History Day. Two students earned national recognition. Cameron Bachelder, a current eighth grader at Sedgwick, was a top-10 finalist in the junior individual documentary category and a recipient of the Outstanding Connecticut Entry for Junior Division Award. And also Anna Pack Small, a current ninth grader at Conard, earned honorable mention in the junior individual exhibit category. And I just want to throw a shout out to David Lee, who is a teacher at Sedgwick. He's to be credited for leadership and inspiration in not only the local, the state, and certainly the National History Day competitions. Very, very proud. But moving along, and a lot of my updates are really going to be taken up by this amazing crew in front of you, and I'll just kind of kick them off, and if you're following along in your book, I believe we're on page 27. And I wanted to just make mention that not too long ago, on August 25th, last week, Wednesday, we welcomed faculty and staff to our convocation. So a huge shout out and thanks to Joy Wright, principal at King Philip, who was our host. I want to thank Dr. Charlotte Whitman Logan, who is the director of Bow Strings, who gave an amazing performance, as well as Dr. Gwen Baker, our director of Sixth Dimension, and Mr. Brian Pia, who accompanied on the piano. Just an incredible job done by our students, and the most inspirational of which, you know, we, our theme was making a difference, and the story that came from Ali Alal, eighth grader at King Philip, was, was nothing short of inspiring. So very, very proud of all of them, and I would also have to give a shout out to our 2025-2026 Teacher of the Year from Charter Oak, Ms. Christina Fadolfi, who gave a very energetic and very amusing address that really put us into a, into a phenomenal mood. Thank you to Dr. Thomas Farquharson for her wonderful comments as well, but it, it just kicked off the year in the right spirits. We are on incredible momentum from, from last year in terms of our achievements, things that we're going to highlight to you in upcoming board presentations. But this group is prepared to talk to you about what they did on their summer vacation across our 16 schools. So without further ado, I will turn it over, and they will run through updates across each of the major functional areas in the order that you see, with each of them falling under their area of responsibility. So without further ado, I'll turn it right over to Mr. Duarte.
All right, so I want to provide you with an update of the work that took place across our district this summer. I will say, I had a tremendous amount of fun going up on roofs and in basements and all of the cool places I've heard all about, but now I got to see them. So our teams in plant facilities, information technology, and transportation have been hard at work all summer long, ensuring our buildings and systems were ready for a smooth opening of school. So I'll start with plant and facilities. So the summer months were extremely busy with both large capital improvements and smaller maintenance projects. I'll go through a couple ones here. So at Bristow, a new gym floor was refinished, as well as several classrooms and restrooms were painted. At Bugbee, some major roof replacement, and a new fire alarm system was done. Conard, I know we heard about the nice main entrance corridor, as well as gym floors were refinished, and then the new scoreboard for the girl softball field, which you can see the picture up there. And actually, I believe that's the Bristow Gym, you can see there as well, nice and shiny, and that is the King Philip roof that I got to tour while the solar panels were off of it. Duffy, we heard a lot about over the last couple years, so a completion of the, that significant HVAC project, so it is just wonderful there now. Hall High School, which I'll show some pictures in a minute, had some security upgrades. They, I'm sorry, they had their cafeteria and restrooms done, which I, I know I'm hearing a lot of rave reviews about the restrooms and the cafeteria, so I'll show you that image in a bit. And then King Philip, also the security upgrade, so refiguring that entranceway, which should be complete by the end of September. And then Walkit as well, which that'll go on throughout the year, but we're doing a pretty significant facelift to that as well. So beyond these projects, all schools received a very thorough cleaning, inspections and repairs, and fresh mulch was added to all of the playgrounds, which I know is very important. When you look at information technology this summer, again, a tremendous amount of work was done by our IT department. One of the things I did want to highlight, that we applied for a $1.6 million E-rate funding, which essentially is federal funding that supports networking equipment. So it's on a five-year cycle. We've, no, knock on wood, we've always gotten it, but this was the time to reapply for it, so we're anxiously anticipating getting that. Implementing single sign-on for many of our systems, and I am a huge supporter of single sign-on, probably because I can't remember my passwords half the time, but it does make things much easier for myself. I see some people have that same issue. And then integrating some of our financial systems with some of our other pieces to really reduce the paperwork. Getting Power School to now have students' IEPs and 504s on there, which I think makes life a lot easier for teachers, but also really helps with some of the compliance issues, making sure that everyone knows what our students need to have. Launching the School Status Connect, which is a way for our teachers to communicate with families. It's a lot easier, we've been hearing a tremendous amount of positive reviews. It actually allows teachers to use their cell phone, and it changes the number so that you can now either text a parent back and forth, or you can actually use your phone, and you're not now needing to use your own personal number on there. And it does translate into the languages of that individual preference. So it's really helping families have that back-and-forth communication with schools and teachers. On the infrastructure side, we continue to roll out the Infomocast Rapid Response System. So again, that's a quick response that gets emails out right away in an emergency. It also has the ability for two-way communication with the police, and so we were trying that at the different schools as the summer went along, and really happy to have that in all of our buildings. We essentially got rid of what I call many of our landlines in some of our locations, like our elevators and those pieces, and believe it or not, that's going to have $200,000 savings. So I think the company actually was wanting us to get rid of it, which is why their fees were so allowed. So we've been happy to do that, and we've just seen that it's actually a lot more reliable as well. And then our IT actually closed out 17,000 HelpDust tickets this year, replaced 2,000 devices, and they were proud to tell me that they had a 99.9% uptime across our network, so folks were able to get on that network. So, you know, I think that's something that we certainly want to give kudos to. From a transportation side, we anticipate having over 5,200 students this year on our buses. I will say that that's been filling a lot of my time in this job, learning a lot about the buses and the routes and all of those things, and that we anticipate having over 100 more students this year, and that's 92 buses over 209 runs. And so we were fortunate, we partnered with First Student, who's our company. I met with them over the summer, really talked about some of our expectations, some of the things we're hoping can run smoothly. They had some significant training for their drivers and really hoping to have all of those pieces. And, and I did hear that, although there were certainly some hiccups here and there, for the most part, our buses really ran smoothly. So I had my fingers crossed the entire day. I think when Paul walked in, he just saw me sitting there like this the whole day, so. And so in closing, I would be remiss if I did not take a moment to personally thank our extremely dedicated staff in plant and facilities, IT, and transportation for their outstanding work, and really everyone that goes into making the back-to-school feel special for all of our kids and all of our families. I believe the work that they completed this summer not only enhances the safety and functionality of our schools, but also creates the conditions for greater efficiency, and a most, and most importantly, a better experience for our students, our staff, and our families. And so just a couple pictures before I turn it over to my friend here. So you can see what the bathroom looked like, and now what it looks like, and that's the picture on the left, your left, yep. And then on the right, that's Walkit, so you can see that we had to put up a wall while we continued to go through those renovations. But I think Mr. Dunn has done a very nice job to make it look really nice while we continued to go through those renovations. You can see here's King Philip, so a pretty significant redesign there, and so that's what it looked like, and then you can see the beautiful piece where they're at there. And again, that should be complete shortly. And then last but not least, is you've got the beautiful Titan Bistro, which I can't wait, I know, Bridget, that's how I felt as the former Conard principal when I saw this. But it is really, really nice. And so without that, I will turn it over to Ann.
Hello, it's so nice to see all of you. Over in the Office of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, we've been spending our time this summer working in four primary areas. First, of course, aligned with your goal of recruiting, retaining, and developing a high-quality staff, we have put a lot of effort into some professional learning efforts, and primarily, we sent two leadership teams to Solution Tree's PLC Outwork Institute to deepen our expertise in using evidence of student learning to plan ahead and to guide our instructions, our instruction. We're very excited about this effort because it is key to, it aligns beautifully with our coherence work, so that our teachers look closely at student work to identify what students have learned, and then to plan accordingly. This is, this will be a year-long effort to train all of our administrators, and we have other groups going later in the school year. We also continue to invest in our AP program, which is, as you well know from our reports, an exceptionally successful program. This year, six educators participated in AP training, supporting new courses and deepening learning for experienced teachers. One highlight will be our new AP cybersecurity course that will be piloted at Hall this year, that also has industry, that prepares students for certifications in industries, industry-level certifications like Comp TIA Security. We also invested in our school counselors by sending some to the ASCA Annual Conference, where they were able to choose from a variety of different topics. In partnership with Melissa's office, we are very pleased to follow our training that comes from our HR office on day two, and August 22nd, we invited our new teachers back for a second day, and our office, Office of Curriculum Instruction Assessment, had the teachers for half that time, where they introduced them to where can you find these resources, what are our highly effective teaching strategies that we as a district believe in, and of course, introducing them to the vision of the graduate, which is the goal for, it's kind of the North Star which guides us. So we were very happy to partner with Melissa's office, and she'll talk about what they did on, during their time with them. Our office works all summer to continue curriculum updating under the great leadership of Eileen Eustace and Melissa Barron's curriculum-writing teams work all summer to update certain projects that have been identified during the course of the school year as needing updates, and making sure that they're readily, readily available in our digital repository, so people don't have to pass binders to each other, they can easily get their curriculum. And we also have, of course, are running summer programs, and we served over 900, and just, this is just on our side, because Melissa, of course, has a side too. Just on the Office of Curriculum Instruction Assessment, we have a high school, summer school program, which has been very successful, running for years, where we served 327 students in district and 57 out of district. A number of those students are getting credit recovery, and a larger number are even advancing their, advancing a credit or two during this, in the summer. We ran the Summer Connections Program for grades one through five at Charter Oak Elementary, and that focuses on literacy and math skills. We ran our ESOL Summer School Program out of Smith School this summer, and I think that, that program had about 160 students, and there's also a parent ESOL class that's running at the same time, that served another 21 parent groups, I believe. Our HANNIC Summer Program is a program that runs out down in our HANNIC Center in the Hillcrest neighborhood, and served 21 students there. And we also have summer music programs that are running in conjunction with leisure services. So we totally, a total served 906 students this summer in programming. Very good. I'll pass it over to Melissa. Oh, I did want to mention one other update, I'm sorry. Just recently, preparing for the school year, we've gotten our list of bilingual schools for the year. We just received that, and we have seven bilingual mandated schools from the State Department of Ed this year. Charter Oak mandated for Spanish. Whiting Lane mandated for Spanish. Smith for Portuguese and Spanish. King Philip Middle for Spanish. Sedgwick for Spanish. Conard and Hall both for Portuguese and Spanish. So when a school has more than 20 students, they need to be served, they are designated as mandated bilingual schools by the State Department. So that will be for the upcoming school year.
Good evening and happy school year from the Office of Pupil Services. Welcome to our two newest board members, so nice to see you and have you serving on the board. I always like to start with our annual performance report, because that is one of the ways that the state measures the performance of our compliance with Individuals with Disabilities for Education Act. And this issuance is a couple years back, so it does reflect the 22-23 school year, but we again met the highest determination level of MEATs requirements, which we're very proud of. And in that issuance, some of the key areas that we're really proud of include our graduation rates for students with disabilities, our early childhood outcomes, our post-secondary transition goals, and our timely and accurate reporting. Notably, within our graduation rates, the state is at 85% for students with disabilities, and West Hartford is at 94.9%, and that's a couple of years ago, and it does capture some of the difference there. Might be students who are participating in our post-secondary transition program that do not take their diplomas at the time of graduation, and we know that that's a growing program. So we're very proud of our graduation rate comparative to the state. In early childhood outcomes, when we look at the two-year comparison, we really see some great growth in our positive social, emotional skill development, the use of knowledge and skills, and overall, the number of students that are exiting the program, meeting age-level requirements and expectations is, is really fantastic. We're very happy about that. And while very slight, you know I talk about our out-of-district numbers quite often, and our work around having designated pupil services administrator who's doing the work of bringing students back, going out to sites, getting to know our families, bringing them into our community, and really, on an ongoing basis across the school year, our students are retreating back to their least restrictive environment. And so we finally saw a little dip in that number for the 22-23 school year, and I'm hoping when future data is released, we'll be able to realize some of hoping when future data is released, we'll be able to realize some of our efforts relative to bringing students back to their illery. So I was very proud to see that in the report. Relative to our summer, so as Anne was sharing on some of the great programs that she was offering, we welcomed 400 students to our extended school year program, which is a four-week program that occurs over the summer, five days a week. And we were just thrilled to have our students back with us for that time. We have a shortened day program and an extended day program. And we also had a great opportunity for our extended school year students that was solely offered to them, which was a camp, which was a partnership with the Justice Education Center called Inspire Ability. And 75 students who were eligible for extended school year were able to participate in a camp that ran for two weeks at Charter Oak International Academy. And informal feedback from that social opportunity was overwhelmingly positive from different stakeholders, staff, students, and families. And so we were very happy, and I'd like to acknowledge Kelly Brous' leadership in that, our assistant director, she did a lot of work to provide that opportunity to our students, and we were so happy to be able to do that this school year for the summer. As we welcome students back at the beginning of this school year, we are welcoming back 1,879 students with individualized education plans. That number, when we look at our October 1 number of last year, which is our kind of timestamp, that's about 100 students more with IEPs than last year at this time. We have had a number of move-ins, the number is still a moving target, and so that, we do anticipate that that number will grow. And we have approximately 1,007 students who have Section 504 plans, who have accommodations. When we look back at the report, again, our annual, our annual performance report from '22, '23, our percentage rate was at 17% prevalence rate, but our current standing in 2025 is at 20% of prevalence rate for students with disabilities. And really what that means for us, and we talk about, you know, the overall impact of our enrollment and our programming, and so for us, that meant that we were increasing programming for students who have pretty significant needs. So our intensive academic programming grew at the elementary level by two sections, and also our post-secondary classroom at the secondary level. I will tell you, just kind of surveying where we are in terms of our enrollment right now, those classrooms are, are very full. So as students are moving into the district, we're seeing that, that high-needs population is a trend we continue to see here. And so those classrooms comparative to our resource types of models, that is the area that we're seeing the most amount of student growth in terms of our actual enrollment numbers. So we do, we do monitor that closely across the school year. And relative to staffing, we welcome back 21 new staff that might have been to fill positions for staff that had retired or moved on, and then six of those were new positions in response to the student needs that we had anticipated from last year into this coming school year. And so amongst those were special education teachers, related service providers, such as a school psychologist, and a speech and language pathologist, and a board-certified behavior analyst. And as Anne was saying, it's, we have such a nice opportunity, following such a beautiful welcome-back ceremony that Shannon had put on for our new faculty members that we're welcoming back to the new school year. Anne had them for half the day, we had them the other half of the morning on Friday, which was just a great opportunity to meet with pupil services staff and really ground them in our policies, our procedures, our resources, so they're really set up for success. And similarly, working with the general education teachers that will be working with students with disabilities, really setting them up for success and helping them understand who their, who their team members and colleagues will be that, that will be supporting them, understanding how to support a student who has a disability, and what resources might be available to them, to really help them feel secure and confident going into the classroom as they start the school year. Annually, we have a legislative update, and this year, in special education, the legislative session was very heavy. And I won't bore you with all the granular details, but certainly, if you would like some light bedtime reading, the legislative update is very, very dense this school year, and a lot of it is around private placements. And so when you really look at what was the focus of this legislative session, it was around private providers and the private sector, and it includes everything from legislation around cost, cost capping for, for services, so that all private providers are charging the same billable rates for speech and language services across all providers, all private schools have the same tuition rate. This is similar from what we saw through the Special Education Advisory Board Task Force that they had done. So some of these we see are kind of paired with that. Other, other components that really go into, you know, contracts for private providers, excess cost billing for private providers, so just a lot around really the focus of bringing students back into district and looking at making outside providers, when we do need to go along the continuum, a little bit more affordable and cost-effective. So we saw a lot of emphasis there. A really big change in our work is the change for developmental delay. Connecticut was one of the few states that allowed developmental delay as an eligibility category only until the age of five. Many states had expanded that beyond the age of five, and Connecticut, in this legislative session, changed that. That's a benefit to our students, because it allows for more time for them to develop and grow and mature as we assess what their needs might be before we determine what their eligibility category is, if in fact they even have one. So it just gives them a little bit more time until the age of eight. Also, unique in this session was a Office of Educational Ambuds Person, and that person will be appointed by the governor, and their sole role will be to support special education families in districts when there might be a dispute, informally resolving those, those conflicts. So we look forward to that appointment and better understanding what that person might be doing in that role, and how they might support our families. And partnering with Anne's great work that she's doing on the curriculum side, we really worked hard to get our CTSE system up and going, it's running much more smoothly. And the past couple of years, we've been working on quality IEPs, and last year, we really transitioned to writing standards-based IEPs. And that's really great work that's been articulated from the curriculum office all the way through our department, to really ensure that when we're writing IEPs, that they're standards-based, so that we could really zero in on those achievement gaps and work to close them. And so we're very excited to continue that work this, this school year. Also, we have some great community partnerships that we're continuing this school year, and we're so grateful to those community organizations that give so much to our schools, namely The Bridge. So The Bridge counseling services are offered for all students at no cost within our schools. That includes counseling, direct counseling services, and also mentoring, mentorship programs, and small groups. It could be a grief group, a friendship circle. So The Bridge does really great things for all of our students, we're so fortunate to have them. In addition to that program, they also, at the middle schools, run a mental health clinic that operates separate and different from the partnership that we have for them. And that is an opportunity for families to access mental health services in the middle school through their insurance. And so that allows them, if they're having difficulty accessing mental health services outside of school during after-school hours due to other commitments or obligations, they have the opportunity to have those services during the school day at the three middle schools, which is of huge benefit to our families and has been a very successful partnership. This year, we also were the recipient of a partnership that came through the state grant for Effective School Solutions. They're an organization that provides mental health services to the local area, and they had received a large grant, and they needed to partner with the school district. We had a previous relationship with them that was very positive, and so they reached out to us and said, we've received some money, we'd like to, you know, partner with West Hartford Public Schools again. And so this school year, we have two programs running, one at Bristow and one at King Philip Middle School, which is a through-line for our engagement and attendance programming that we have at the high school. Because when we really look across where those systems break down, it tends to be middle school, and by the time they're in high school, we have students who are already avoidant and non-attending. And so we wanted to provide services and supports for students at the middle school to really intervene sooner, and we're very excited for that partnership with Effective School Solutions. So those two clinicians are already partnering and at those school sites. I'd also like to acknowledge our partnership with West Hartford Social Services. They do so much for the town and so much for our youth, and they are such a great partner for us in the community and for us in mental health services, but they do so much more. They offer training such as QPR training, which is a suicide prevention training, they offer parent information nights, they do a lot around awareness events, and so we're just very grateful for all of their services that they offer in their partnership with us. And last but certainly not least, I want to acknowledge our special education PTO, our Septo, very vibrant community, and we're so fortunate, they have a new leadership team and have put together a really beautiful calendar of events for this upcoming school year, and our first event is on September 17th, and it's our big kickoff event, so we're looking forward to welcoming families. There's no cost to participate, so if you're interested in joining, there's information on our website, or you could reach out to Kelly or I, so we can get you that information. Thank you. Passing on to Shannon.
Thank you, Melissa. I just want to start by publicly thanking everyone at this table, Anne, Paul, who has been so incredibly welcoming and supportive to me all summer as I've transitioned into this role. And I also want to give a shout-out to the amazing HR staff. Amani, and Karen, and Josie, and Linda, and Kim are just absolutely outstanding, and their professionalism, their work ethic, the knowledge of all of the systems and processes and human resources has been so incredibly helpful, so I'm thankful for all of you. So this summer, we were very excited to welcome 53 new contracted teachers, plus 11 interim staff members. We have five new administrators, including a new principal at Webster Hill and at Aiken. Our turnover rate remains consistent at about that 6%. The retirements this year accounted for a large number of that turnover percentage. Through surveys and exit interviews, we also try to get a sense of why people are choosing to leave, and some of those are family needs, relocations, job changes, and other factors. Again, we were very pleased to have a very high number of highly skilled candidates. We had nearly 2,000 applicants, which is about 300 more than we've had over the previous two years. 59% of our new staff have five years or more of teaching experience, which really just speaks to the high caliber of staff and the number of people that are really seeking out West Hartford. At the New Teacher Orientation, we did a little exercise where we had people stand and share the amount of years of experience they have teaching, and we have people that are signing their very first professional contracts. And we had many people that have been teaching for 20 or more years that were really looking for a district like ours, and at a point in their career where they wanted to be in someplace like West Hartford. The diversity of our staff remains a continued area of focus. The percentage of new hires that identified as minority candidates is 14%, which is slightly more than last year. So the overall diversity of our staff remains at approximately 10%, and we clearly still have work to do in order to have our teaching demographic mirror our student population. We're excited to continue to be a district partner for the Connecticut Teacher Residency Program, working also in collaboration with Teresa's office. We have two new resident teachers this year that will be working at Whiting Lane in special education. We also have two teachers that are in year two of the program. One is working in the ELC, and one is working in Strive. Those are all resident teachers that have already previously worked in West Hartford. They came highly qualified by their principals, they went through a rigorous application process, interview process, and we're really excited to be working with them, and also continuing to look for ways that we can support them and support the program. Similar to last year, we had a lot of success of having both teachers working in the same school. It also helped for them to be a support to each other, and that's what we have this year also with Whiting Lane. On August 21st, we had the New Teacher Orientation, as Anne and Melissa mentioned, that was a nice partnership. That was a two-day program. I want to thank Brian DeRozier, he's a first-grade teacher at Duffy, and he helped to facilitate the program, and he brought such energy and passion and just such a love for children and the profession that I know really resonated with all of the new staff that were there. We also had three Braburn students, Elijah, Lola, and Quinn, that spoke about why they loved their school and why they loved their teachers. Christina Fadelfi, our West Hartford Teacher of the Year, gave a speech and spoke to the new staff. And we also had Jessica Blitzer, that provided information on the history of West Hartford and the public schools. But I have to say, after being here 25 years, I still learned some new things from her presentation. And then in addition, we also had, at the New Teacher Luncheon, Paul addressed the new staff, Rick Ledwith spoke with them, and Lorna, I know it was also a pleasure for them to get to hear your perspective, both as board chair and as a mom, and I think that that really resonates and gave another reason of why West Hartford is such a special place to be. Also, at the luncheon, we continued a tradition that Giulio had started last year by honoring teachers for their years of service. So this year, we honored five teachers that are starting their 30th year in the district, and we have 83 employees this year that are starting their 25th year in the district. So we have a little recognition token of our appreciation for them, and they'll be recognized among their staff this fall. But I will say, the New Teacher Orientation was probably, you know, one of the highlights, definitely, of my summer, and just getting to welcome so many new staff to our district and letting them really see what makes us great, because at the end of the day, it's the teachers and the staff who all of those children go in every single day, we hope with smiles on their faces to learn and grow. So, thank you.
Moving right along. Hello and welcome back, everyone. It feels just like yesterday, I was here with you on the last meeting, so I'm really honored to be back and dive into a little bit of what we did this summer as a department for the Office of Equity Advancement, as well as the work that we have ahead. And as, I think Giulio gave the prelude, we have a lot of continuing to work, work to do as we partner in, in the restorative, I don't know, foundation, right? That's, that's important for us to have as a district to do our work moving forward. So I'll start with a little bit of the professional development. This year, the summer, I was blessed, thank you, Anne, to have eight staff members, teacher staff members work together with the Office of Equity Advancement to develop some modules for restorative practices that we will, that the entire district will use throughout the year. I believe that when we think about the work of restorative practice, I know that we, it's the temptation is to talk about what happens when things go wrong. But if I, if I drew a pie chart of what restorative practices are at their root, it's, it's the 80% of that chart is what we do when things aren't going wrong. You know, restorative practices have its, its roots and indigenous roots, that, where it's, it's about community, and it's about how you instill a sense of community in a place, right? So you have a bunch of people, you all gather together in a place, and you spend time together. It's the difference between, you know, if we all lived in an apartment building versus we, we became a family, right? There's, there's a different process for not just sharing space because we have to, but sharing space because we want to, and we value each other, we see each other, we know each other. And so although there's lots of temptation to be really concerned about what happens when things go wrong, the idea is that you prevent things from going wrong by having really well-established practices for how to make sure that things are going right. That happens through communication, it happens through building trust, and I think, you know, Latoya hit the nail on the head when we talk about, this is not a practice that happens outside of the adults, it's actually very, it's a very heavily adult-driven theory of action. You know, if you think about your family, your children weren't running how your family went, right? How things went, what time you went to bed, et cetera, et cetera. Those were adult decisions that helped kind of frame the work that happens, and you, and you allow children to help inform what happens. Well, it's the same with the school, right? We, we always talk, I think, in terms of schools being families. It kind of follows that same family model. The adults are kind of creating the condition for how things work. What happens when I, as the adult, make the mistake, and, you know, I accuse you of doing something that you didn't do? How do I respond to that? Do I acknowledge, hey, listen, I know that I said that you did it, I apologize, you know, that was, that was really so-and-so, they came up and told me. It's about how you manage things when they happen. So, you know, I can't stress it enough, because I've been down this road in five districts, and I can tell you when it's successful, and I can tell you when it's not successful. When we focus on what happens when it goes wrong, that's the recipe for it to not be successful. You really do have to build the culture. We're not looking to do restorative practices, we're looking to be restorative. It's a very, it's, sounds like it's a small tweak, but it's not, it's big. It's, it's understanding that we're all human, we all err, and when that happens, how do we make things right? But more importantly, how do we relate to each other on a day-to-day basis? So- So this amazing staff that got together this summer to work on our restorative practices spent time building those foundational pieces. Respect agreements, right? Not rules on the wall that you walk in the door and I already tell you what the do's and don'ts of this space, but how do we work together to create how we're going to treat each other when we're in a space? What does respect look like for you, for, you know, for teachers? How does it look for them? And how's it look for students? How do they want to be respected? How do we want to respect each other, right? We start the process as leaders with actually doing respect agreements amongst ourselves as a leadership team. Again, you model what you want to see happen. So the principals had to actually experience, what's it like to do, build a respect agreement? That way, they can go back and they can model in their buildings to show teachers, what's it like to build a respect agreement? And then the teachers will go back to their classrooms and what is it like to build a respect agreement? Because it's not, it's not a hierarchical system. The indigenous practices, and not just indigenous, when we think of Native Americans, but also African indigenous tribes, the reason why they have that is because there isn't a hierarchy, right? So it's not about, I'm the adult in charge and my feelings matter more than yours. It's, it matters how we treat each other. And so you take account to all those things. So we had a, actually a middle school teacher who actually wrote out our respect agreement module for, that compiled that out. And what the principals are given is actually completed modules that they can actually do, and you can do it as-is, because it has all the information and the links and the activities. Or, you know, my suggestion to all leaders, because I never like to be told exactly what to do, is that you take it and you make, and you mirror it and you model it for your staff, and you make it your own. And you add anecdotes that your staff gets, right? It's like in-house jokes. Like you add what makes it personal to your staff, and you bring it to life. You breathe life into the basic materials that you've been given. So they processed through and went through eight. So we started with respect agreements, went to effective statements. So, because as adults, we never, we actually didn't really practice the art of telling somebody, hey, you did this and it makes me feel like that, right? That's a really important thing to practice, and it's especially important thing for adults to practice with children, because we don't typically do that. Again, I've been a teacher, I've been taught by teachers, and I can, I can say, as a student, I don't think I ever heard an adult speak to me in that way, where they're acknowledging that a choice that I've made has made them feel a certain way, and it's impacting their ability to do their job. That's, so when I talk about what restorative practice is, yeah, it's not something that, if you're adopting the practices, you're changing how you do business. And you have to learn in discrete skills, and it's also mindset shift. And there's a lot of practicing. So when Giulio was talking about the work that we do in leadership meetings, he means it. Like you don't get good at this by just learning it in a book. We do scenarios, you have to practice it, you have to talk about it, you have to calibrate. So, you know, all that work kind of gets crafted, and then we practice it together. So whatever module they're going to do in their buildings, we practice at our leadership meeting. We give them an opportunity to ask questions, we give them an opportunity to practice. We also then partner them with their EDC chair, their EC lead, who's a teacher leader or who supports and helps them with this work and allows, again, to bring another perspective in to make that happen. So, again, super proud of the work that they were able to get done. And to be honest with you, I think I'm learning the art of sharing responsibility, which is not easy for me. So just being able to allow, you know, amazing teacher leaders to take charge and to create and to put their own spin on things was a learning experience for me that I had to learn to lean into. And I'm extremely proud of it because they blew me away with what they came up with, with their perspective, with their approach to it. And so we had a really great summer with creating that, so that all staff in West Hartford can benefit from that. Again, as we learn to be more restorative, not do restorative. So also, we are, we're looking at being really proactive when it comes to having dialogue, particularly around some challenging behaviors that we have observed, particularly in the high school. So having, I worked, got to work together with the high school principals this summer. I'm looking at the data and identifying what were the things that popped up for them as, you know, the challenging behaviors that we see continuing to pop up and creating with them some community lessons and some modules that they'll run through with the high school students, just to preemptively have the conversations and use that within community lessons, to just have some real discussion that doesn't involve, that looks to kind of take away whether or not the person in front of you is totally comfortable, like, starting that conversation and then carrying it forward, right? Like, so it's, you're going to learn some things, and then the adult just facilitates a really good conversation, which is how students learn best, right? Kind of like the Socratic method, right? You're, we're going to throw something out there, we're going to all talk about it, and you all get an opportunity to kind of put your thoughts and build off of each other. So we're excited to pilot that and get that started within a month or so for our high school students. And then I got to spend, can you press? I was like, picture, pictures. The best, one of the best parts of my summer is just spending all the time in the community with community activities. You know, so much of this work, and so much of the work that we do in general in schools, it feels like it's a school thing, but the reality is, is it's not, we can't do anything without community and to be surrounded by the community and a part of the community. So this was actually our back-to-school bash that was actually not ours. We were, we were there in support with Elevate Weha and Concerned Parents of Color of West Hartford. So we had, well, I was supposed to have a table, but anyway, things happened. I ended up with a couple little tables with activities that actually, you know, I don't know why I'm always surprised at this, but we, I had activities that kind of got people to come and sit, and sit in, you know, mixed groups of people and just talk about, you know, what was happening while they were like, like drawing or painting or what have you. I have to tell you, I had, I met the most amazing students, but also their parents and relatives that they brought with them as they sat there across from people who they'd never met before and just talked in, you know, organically, you know, the topic of, obviously, of school came up. And, you know, they got to share some of, you know, their hopes and dreams for what we're hopefully doing in the school systems and how, and I got a whole bunch of feedback because that's what you do. If, you know, you have students, you know, I have ears, I want to know, how can we be better? And so I was able to get some of that information, which was great as well. Hit again, thank you. And then, no offense to Paul, but he wasn't able to join, so I got to go to the Nepali graduation ceremony and hand out certificates. But we have a growing Nepali community, Nepalese community here in West Hartford, and they had a summer camp that, or summer school that ran where they taught language, culture, and like, you know, traditional dance for that 10-week program. And so they have a graduation ceremony at the end of it. And because Paul was celebrating his anniversary, which I, you know, I told him, I was like, your wife probably isn't going to appreciate you trying to not go to that. So I got to go, along with the deputy mayor, is that his technical title? Yeah, so we, you know, we bonded over this and got to have this opportunity. But it was a great way to connect and to learn. I learned a lot. I also learned how much I don't understand of, you know, Nepalese. I was like, what? What was, what's being said? Rarely am I in a space where I'm totally out of, like, where I can't even make, like, you know, connections with even part of the language. And so that was definitely a learning experience for me, and I'm committing to learning a little bit so I can communicate. And next time I go, I practiced a phrase, Paul, but I will tell you that I chickened out from using it as they let me do a speech. And I practiced all day long, and then when I got there, I'm like, I'm not saying this because I'm going to mess it up. And anyways, next time I will be braver. And then last, but certainly not least, we welcomed into our West Hartford family 36, I believe, new families that are participating through open choice, and we had a welcome-back celebration for them in August. And it was just amazing. I didn't get a picture of her that way, she was standing still, because she kept moving. So like, I got like, action pictures. But, you know, one of the students was a kindergartner coming in, who, I kid you not, was the most comfortable child with a microphone I think I've ever seen at five years old. And I taught first grade, so when I tell you, like, super comfortable, she was running the show, she actually had to have the microphone, like, taken from her because she was on a roll. But we, you know, what was beautiful about it is we had, we had our staff mixed in with our families and students. We had student ambassadors who got to come and talk about the schools and just really have beautiful conversations about what it's like to be a West Hartford public school student. And what I love even more is that they were honest. They, you know, we are not as amazing as we are, we have work to do. And I think when kids can acknowledge we have work to do, and they can remind adults that we have work to do, we're all better served for it. And so, but it was an amazing night. We had about 35 families, over 50 people, come, and then we got to break bread together and learn about, you know, West Hartford Public Schools. And kudos to Amy Yarborough, my team, who thought, dreamed this up and executed it. It was phenomenal. So I think that's it for me.
Last but never least.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to speak with you this evening regarding the first day of school enrollment snapshot. West Hartford Public Schools opened the year with 8,670 K-12 students enrolled. This was a reduction of 16 students from the prior year and 22 fewer than previously projected. For elementary students, 3,906 students were enrolled. This represents 22 additional elementary students compared to the prior year and 42 more than projected for the current school year. Variances were most notable in the first grade, which added 11 students, and the third grade, which added 22 students compared to projected. There are currently 202 elementary sections, six above the budget, resulting in section sizes of 19.3 on average. All but one section is within class size guidelines with one exception due to late enrollment, and that section will receive additional instructional support. Middle school enrollments were five less than prior year and 19 students less than projected. Sixth grade was down 31 students, whereas seventh and eighth increased three and nine students respectively. At the high school level, Conard has 20, had 29 fewer students than projected, and Hall saw an increase of three students. Total high school enrollment for Hall and Conard totaled 2,749. As mentioned earlier, this is a one-day snapshot, and so enrollments will be changing throughout the course of the month. And I will be back to report out to you the official enrollment report as of October 1st later this fall. Thank you.
One alibi for me. I didn't thank Melissa Caballero for her amazing emcee job at Convocation. She's got talents beyond special education. If you need her parties, I have her number. But pending your questions.
Thank you very much for the information. Hands raised already, yes. I see Latoya, and, start with Latoya.
I got a lot to say tonight. Just kidding. No, I just, it's just another opportunity to give y'all kudos. And it's the beginning of the year, and I just want to make sure I continue. Like, I feel like there's no limit to appreciation. But the, from the improvements on the buildings, which is about access to the special education work, making sure all our students have resources and supports to be successful, that's equity. You know, thinking about how we recruit folks and thinking about, you know, how do we get people that mirror our community, that's diversity. And then the sense of belonging that you are also committed to and making sure that every student in the district has that as a dignified human being and that they're worthy of that, I mean, it's beautiful. And so, you know, I just, I like to point those pieces out because sometimes there are misconceptions about what diversity, equity, and inclusion is. And everything that we're doing, like, that's it. It's making sure every student has access, every student has support, every student has resources, every student feels like they belong. And y'all are doing an amazing job, and you're not backpedaling. You're standing 10 toes down, and I respect that. So thank you.
All right. Other feedback comments? Yes, Claire?
Thank you for the reports. Great things have been done this summer, and I think you have a great foundation for the next year. I had a couple of questions. Melissa, does the developmental delay change in age increase the caseload or numbers of identified special ed kids?
You know, that's a question to be determined. You know, one would presume that it would be more the eligibility category for a particular student versus another student carrying it beyond that would not typically be identified because we're still going through an eligibility process. So all of our same regulations will stay in place. We'll still do comprehensive child fine for any student with a suspected disability. The only difference will be that when we come to the eligibility determination, we will have the opportunity to consider developmental delay as maintained beyond the age of five. So I see that coming into play for a student who has been identified with a developmental delay, and they're due for their three-year reevaluation. And we at that time or before the age of five must pick a different eligibility category. Now we can give them a period of time where if they still qualify under developmental delay, they can maintain that until age eight, helping us then, when we do the comprehensive evaluation at that time, better understanding their profile, they would have had time to grow and develop. And then when we come together and really discuss eligibility, we might have more information or more pertinent information that will help us arrive at a better eligibility category. So to be determined, but I, I think it might just be a nuance, but we'll be monitoring that for sure.
Okay. And I was impressed with the inspirability. Is that, no, that was for ESY, but some of the summer programs, are they just for the Title I schools? Well, there was Inspire, and there was something else that you mentioned at Charter Oak. Summer Connection?
Summer Connections is the Title I schools, yes.
And so if a child needed the support but attended a different school, is there the ability for them to get the summer support?
Well, for ESOL students, there's the ESOL program. So there's other programs that can pick up students, like Melissa's programs, the ESOL program. During, when we had the ESTER funding, we were able to expand the Summer Connections beyond to a wider audience, but we had to cut that back.
Okay. And on the note about the high school program, the 57 out of district, are they all paying a tuition to attend?
Yes, sir.
And same with the music programs through leisure services?
Yes.
Is that by fee?
Yes.
But is it also a fee that could be waived for people and free and reduced lunch?
Well, the out of, our, our students are all, yes, are, we do waive the fees for the students in the high school summer school in district. I'd have to check if we waive them for, I don't believe we waive them for the out-of-district.
Okay. And so other towns, students from other towns opt in to?
That's a longstanding summer school that was, has traditionally enrolled many students from out of district. There was nine, nine different districts this year had students attend.
Okay.
Summer, high school summer school.
And then, I'm not sure, it wasn't presented and maybe in the financial examiner's report, but the federal funding loss that we, as a district, were hit with of the $330,000, is that something that is making a direct impact on plans for this year? Or is that going to be addressed at next meeting?
Yeah, actually, I made a quick mention of that in the update that I just mailed out before the meeting to you guys. That was part of money that was held back relating to Title I, Title II, Title III, that, it was late July, I believe, that there was an announcement that that money had been released. So, so we won't see that hit of $330,000 any longer. But we will continue to monitor both state and federal funding as, and town, as there's lots of, lots of fiscal obstacles as we look forward.
Shannon, yes?
Well, congratulations on the start of the school year. It's a lot of great energy in the air, so, and such great thought that's gone into all of this, so very impressed. Couple, I have a kind of a through line around budget and a couple rapid-fire questions. So Giulio, for the E-Rate funding, when will we find out about that?
I didn't get a deadline on that. I don't know if you happen to know that, Barb? I don't know, but I can certainly figure that out. I know I talked to Jared today, and he had submitted that. Again, he didn't, I'll cross my fingers again, he didn't seem concerned about that as that's been something that we've regularly gotten and submitted.
So is that factored in our budget already as anticipated?
Yes.
Okay. Cool. For, kind of related to Claire's question, for Ann, for the summer programming, is that a revenue generator or cost neutral ultimately?
It is, I believe, the trans-
It is, I believe, the transport, and Barb can help me with this for summer school. I believe we run a slight deficit in the program.
Okay.
And it's mostly around our transportation. That brings us down under the funding. Out of district, of course, helps with the costs, but it does, it is not a revenue generator.
Okay.
It's a slight loss.
Just looking for opportunities.
Of course. We wish.
And then Melissa, for the Justice Education Center program, was that a cost to the district or a grant that they received that allowed it to be no cost?
So it was a slight cost to the district. The cost was relative to transportation, the, all the staffing. While we recommended staff that were West Hartford staff so that students with special needs had continued support from known individuals, they, they did all of the hiring, so there was some cost to the district there.
Is that something you think would be repeated, or was it kind of a one-off?
It's a point of exploration. I think we'd like to get more formal feedback on how that camp went and then look at that in the future.
Okay. Thank you. And then, kind of second, is just the Effective School Solutions Grant, is there a sustainability plan for those positions if that's a?
It's a, not at this time. That was money that Effective School Solutions received through the government relative to mental health, and they chose to partner with us. But at this present moment, it's just a one-year partnership.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi. The, reading through page 29, the capital improvements, I thought was really well-done. And then I went and compared it to the capital improvement plan. This is indecipherable compared to that. So if there's a way you can do it this way for capital, would be, even just as a supplement, it would be, for me, it'd be much more helpful.
I'll take the compliment and run.
No, I thought it was, this was easy to follow. The other one, I went back and didn't, went back and tried to figure out why it was, I don't remember being that, I was gonna say something negative, just leave it as it is. No, this was much better.
Good self-restraint, Ethan, yes. Gail?
Thanks. Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for all your hard work. I had a question on the bridge, Melissa. Can you just remind us, you said that all of the counseling and services from the bridge are at no cost to the students. Is that correct? So can you remind us how the bridge is funded? Or what our, what our connection in funding them is?
Sure. So we have a standing contract with them where we are subsidizing that funding. So that is a contract that has been longstanding in the district where we support that opportunity for students to have mental health services that would otherwise be private pay so that there is no barriers for mental health access. It's not only for students with disabilities, it's for any student in the district.
So that's in the Board of Ed budget, or is it in the town budget?
It's in the Board of Education budget.
It's on the Board of Education budget. Okay. I had one other question. Ann, can you explain, what is a bilingual school and what that actually means in terms of if we get any extra funding for that, or is anything to that extent?
So bilingual school would be designated when the number of students in a particular language hits 20 students, so you have a cohort of 20 students in one particular language. So the seven schools I listed have at least 20. And the schools that have two languages have 20, at least 20 in each language. And then they're mandated to have a teacher in the school who is bilingual. So there's different certifications, and they would like a bilingual teacher in that school. And we do get a bilingual grant from the state that, that we've gotten for years that we use for a variety of, of different services, paying tutors and other supports for those schools.
The only difference in these schools is that there has to be a teacher that's bilingual?
Well, the schools all have T-Soul teachers, but there's a specific certification for bilingual as well. So it's a person who has that language background. So we look at the staffing and we look at which schools are bilingual schools, and some of our T-Soul teachers are bilingual teachers. They have both, the necessary language. So we move the staffing when we need to to ensure that the students get the support they need. So if someone in their language who can, who can speak in their language as well as help them just learning, learning English. So we're up to seven schools that have that kind of cluster of kids.
So I'll just echo the sentiments of gratitude for all that you do, although your very productive summers made me feel a bit unproductive. But aside from that, I'm also mindful of the time. So I just have one question, and, you know, it's usually a follow-up or two. But when we budget, we include in that budget additional section breaks. Did we use all of those section breaks?
We did. We had, as you may recall, we had three sections to give when we started. So as Barbara reported, our, our overall net enrollment at the elementary level was 40, you know, exceeded projections by 42. And we were building fairly tightly in that, in that initial projection where we did receive a lot of feedback from families regarding, you know, the potential. And I think, I think a lot of the concern at that time was more in the upper grades. We had a number of sections that were, you know, close to 26 or 27. And we knew and made decisions early when we did crest 27, pretty much in almost all of those schools where that build was that tight, we gave out those three sections. And then over the course of the summer, as Barb mentioned, enrollments continued to come in particularly at grades one and three. And we did, as, as was heard during public comment, and I've taken responsibility for that with the parent and with the community to say, those enrollments came in late in the year to where it was really, and we were, we were significantly over, but we did feel that, you know, generally speaking, once we send the letters home that say, this is who your teacher is, we feel like that's a contract, it's hard to break that. We knew that we were tight over at Bugbee. But we've been in this situation before, and we backfill with additional instructional TA support, instructional para support to be able to provide for small group instruction. And we'll monitor that closely to, to assure that we can still deliver the same level of quality education that I know everyone deserves and expects in the town, so.
So that was actually my follow-up, is, is I know you provide those additional resources, but do you continue to monitor and get feedback about how that's actually playing out in the classroom?
Absolutely. You know, it was one of the first conversations I had with Susan when I went over to visit Bugbee on the first day. I promised to come back so that I can visit those classrooms specifically, see how they're going once the kids got settled. And we'll monitor it, as will the team, as we, as we have a variety of different conversations to see how it's going and see, you know, if those supports are sufficient in terms of being able to provide for a positive learning environment for the kids.
So you said there were six additional classrooms, so because you had a buffer of three, you had to hire three more teachers than the budget was approved?
Six more teachers. So we broke nine sections overall.
Okay. So it was six, and you already had three as a buffer. So somewhere in the budget, we're going to see how you covered those six full-time teachers?
Absolutely.
And the, the support person. And all this was based on the popularity or the changes within our town that that many new kids, 22 third graders is, how, how do you anticipate that? I mean, so, the other thing I was wondering, when you have cap schools like Charter Oak and Smith, and you give class size averages, I don't know if it's possible to give the average of the non-cap schools, because when you average and you've got cap schools, you're gonna skew the nine.
Yeah, it would be easy, we could, if, if you would like us to have a little side note, it'd be easy for us to take those two schools out and provide a better average.
Yeah. I mean, I just think the general parents need to know. Now, as a teacher, I, I had 24 kindergarteners last year. I, you know, we, we have big classes, but I've also had 18 in my class and thought there were 30. And depending on the makeup and the year and the amount of new curriculum, there's just so many things that come in. So keeping an eye on that classroom and that teacher, school classrooms become a community and a family. And right now, from the outside, it's like, oh, there's 24 report cards to do. But in the scheme of teaching, there's just, the numbers aren't that exact about load. Load is based on so many things. Load is not just individuals. So please keep an eye, and, and I'm glad you were able to buy that, bring in that support staff, because years ago, it was every section had to go over in order to get the support. So when I had 28 kids at Duffy in fifth grade, we had to have all three, four classes have 28 before we got the para. And that was 20 years ago. But that was, you know, I didn't get that support at 28.
All right. Other questions? Appreciate the questions because it helps to enlighten us more. Ethan, yes?
Just wanted to go back to the section question. So there's an additional support staff in addition, since you didn't have a class. So it's really only a partial teacher.
Yeah, so you may recall that, for example, in kindergarten, traditionally, we'll, we'll budget for instructional pairs that are automatically provided based on the number of kindergarten sections that you have. Similarly, in any grade level, and those instructional pairs, they used to be called K pairs, they became instructional pairs because they were being utilized primarily in grades K and one, and maybe in some cases in grade two based on building needs. But they were always budgeted for based on the number of K sections at a particular school. What we've always done, if we've run into a situation where we exceed the class size guidelines, and they're guidelines, they're, they're the guidelines set by the board that we try to operate within. But, you know, we don't, as a public entity, we don't have a real true maximum because a family can move in tomorrow. What we do when we exceed those guidelines is we will hire an additional, either a teaching assistant or instructional para, to be able to then provide support in the classroom similar to the model that we use in the primary grades. And that provides an extra set of hands for the teacher who can go in, and the teacher will develop, maybe there's, you know, if you've, if you watch an elementary classroom, our teachers are masterful at creating different small group opportunities for kids and, and the ability to provide for some small group, one-on-one, two-on-one, four-on-one time with the teacher as kids might rotate through stations throughout the day. And so that's an extra person who can be in the room to help monitor a group or two groups while, while the classroom teacher is working with one or two other groups in a different activity and a little bit more of a focused instructional piece.
So the issue is partly, so what I heard you say was, you didn't want to be, you don't want to be disruptive once classes are set.
So we, yeah, we've never, it, it, once we send a letter out and say, you know, Ann McKernan is your elementary teacher, for, for that to change is like a breach of contract with our families. And we, so we'll usually, once those letters are sent, if we end up in a situation where we're gonna, where all of a sudden there's a move in, we are, rather than break the section, our decision is to add support to that section.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Latoya?
Just a quick comment too, because just to speak to that extra support in the class, like having the paras, that, like, I always say, don't sleep on the paras because they are teachers. And coming from someone who, I literally, I started as the crossing guard, then I was lunch and recess staff, and then I was a tutor, and I was a para. When I jumped into the classroom as a teacher, I didn't have a teaching credential. I was on an emergency credential, I wasn't in a credential program. That first year teaching, I broke state records because I was a good para. And I learned how to be good at small group instruction. So when we're saying, like, when, when they're saying that they have instructional pairs in a classroom, those are other teachers, and they are, you know, highly qualified and, and they're good at what they do.
Yeah, many, many of our newer first-year teachers or what have you, we get them through our, either through our paras or through our teaching assistants. And it's a great opportunity, we always say that in the job market, I know it's been said, Shannon will now say it. It's a great opportunity to be seen so that we can, you know, identify that young talent and bring it in.
Other questions or comments? All right, well, I echo the recognition and the appreciation. Thank you so very much, Ms. Ann, Mr. Julio. Oh, don't go just yet, let's go. Ms. Melissa, Ms. Shannon, Ms. Teresa, Ms. Barbara, you all, like the young folks, deuces, but just want to say, thank you so very much for all that you do, and appreciate how you recognize where we are, but there's always room for growth. So a collective thank you once again. All right, deuces, okay. All right. And so as we transition to staff reports and board discussions, which we've had a plethora of that, we now shall go to routine matters. Seeking a motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting of June the 3rd, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Shannon. Is there a second?
Second.
This is the June 3rd? Correct. Jason, thank you for seconding. Discussion. So in response, it's referring to June 3rd meeting. Any suggested edits? All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Any abstain? The ayes have it. Also seeking a motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special board meeting on June 30th, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Shannon. Is there a second?
Suck it.
Thank you, Gail. Discussion.
I had a question.
Yes.
This meeting is scheduled, or is listed as ending at 9:28. I was gone by 7:30, so.
This isn't the most recent, this was the one with my evaluation and contract.
Yeah, I know. I was there for that. We got out, because my daughter was visiting.
Is that the meeting that your daughter was visiting, or was it the grievance hearing that your daughter was visiting?
Yeah, I think what you're, thank you for wanting clarification. The, what you were referring to, there was another meeting that we had following that. Yes, so this was?
Sorry about that.
That's all right. It's important to, to have accurate information before you vote. And so with the motion, any other questions at all, suggested edits? So with a motion on the floor regarding the June 30th meeting, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose?
No.
Any abstain? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Moving on to information and reports, board members, do we have any communication and reports from other boards or organizations? Seeing none, any other information or discussions? Seeing none, I just want to give a collective welcome back all to our 2025-2026 school year. We are going to continue to move ahead. Thank you so much. Moving on to future business, announcement of future meeting dates. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, September the 16th, 2025, here in room 314 at 7:00, followed by Tuesday, October the 21st, here in room 314 at 7:00. And then, once again, on Wednesday, November the 5th, we'll say that is a Wednesday, Wednesday, November the 5th, 2025, here in room 314 at 7:00. Is there a request for any future agenda items?
We had mentioned discussing the finance committee last year. So you were gonna do that this year, or, not last year?
We had it for two years.
We didn't do it last year. I asked for it.
So, thank you.
I brought it up, but we didn't discuss it last year.
And so, received, thank you. And we appreciate your diligence in bringing this up, which we respectfully receive. And from the last time that it was brought up, and correct me teammates if I am interpreting differently, the intent was for that to be a policy discussion meeting, because I think your intent was for it to be more of a structured implementation?
Probably.
I don't want to speak for you. Is that, what are, what are your?
I, my assumption was I'd bring it up. If it has to go through policy, I guess that's fine.
Claire, yes?
I, I was under the impression it was brought up and voted on and voted down. So I don't understand, if you bring up something and it's discussed, voted on and voted down, why is it going to be brought up again?
I could be off my timing. I don't remember it being brought up. I didn't think it was brought up.
brought up last year.
It was brought up two years ago.
Yeah, I know, two years ago.
And it was voted down two years ago?
Exactly, and times change, and we had a very high increase in cost last year, so to me, it's worth discussing.
So, Ethan, I did research on all the Board of Eds that you mentioned had finance committees. I looked at all their minutes over two-year period. Not a single finance committee on any of your example communities had anything in their minutes, other than what you and I discussed at Financial Examiner's monthly meetings, and what we've been discussed in our two meetings a month. Many districts only meet once a month. There is nothing in the minutes of any Board of Ed finance committee within the state that I could find that mirrors what you're trying to say you want in this finance committee. It would be very helpful if you could say what it is, because all the things in their minutes are things that we currently do.
So...
Can I do a point of order? I, I think we've strayed beyond, I think we're actually debating a finance committee as opposed to how we might go about doing that. So, from a policy committee perspective, having, sitting on the policy committee, if there is a specific proposal that we could consider with specifics that could come before the policy committee, I think that's the appropriate venue for this, considering it's not currently an agenda item tonight.
I, I realize it was an agenda item, I was trying to make it an agenda item for future.
No, and they're, my, my point is just...
I'm fine with your, I'm fine with your request.
I think that's the, the appropriate way for us to move that forward.
I'll put down, to me, the key bullet points. I'm not sure about creating a policy, but I'll put the bullet points.
So, whoa, thank you all so very much. Okay, so with the initial piece of an agenda, suggested item, and the response to that is respecting that request, but yes, as has been shared previously and reiterated again today, would best be suited as to be discussed in our policy subcommittee meeting. And so, to ensure that we are accurately able to assess what you are proposing, if you could put something in writing for us to review, our assistant superintendent, Giulio Duarte, if you can share it with him, therefore, that could be an agenda item for the policy subcommittee for us to review with more intentionality.
That's fine. I don't think of the policy committee, because I'm not on it, so I'm fine if you want to do it that way.
But you know what, what is, this is wonderful, because you are on the finance committee, so this will allow us to continue to discuss. But thank you so much for that. So we won't have it as a specific agenda item. If you can please make your recommendations and share them with Giulio, and that will come before our policy subcommittee.
I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you. Any other agenda items? Okay.
So, I'm hoping in the next three Board of Ed meetings, we will have a pre-K presentation on what the district plans to do to meet the state mandates. That's what I'm hoping.
Suggested agenda item duly noted, thank you, Claire. Other specifics as it pertains to an agenda item for upcoming meetings? All right. Seeing none, we shall go, do we have any visitors who would like to make a comment? Seeing none, we do not have an executive session, therefore, seeking a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Shannon. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Thank you, Ethan. Meeting adjourned.